Well, it's a little after five, so we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call the Western Weaver Planning Commission meeting to order. And it looks like we just got a few items on our agenda, one public hearing. Go ahead and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone stand and say the pledge with me. Awesome. Thank you for that. Go ahead and let the record indicate, looks like Commissioner Clance's excuse for tonight's meeting and all other commissioners are in in attendance. First item is our meeting minutes from January tenth. Apologize, I missed the meeting, but it sounded like
It was a, it was a well made, good meeting.
Anybody have any concerns or questions with the minutes?
I'm worried about the chair.
Y'all should be. Uh, I'll, I'll abstain. But that if there's no comments or corrections, I didn't, I listened to a good part of the meeting and kind of looked through them, but I didn't. Um, didn't notice anything, so that'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I'll make a motion, I got a motion, I got a second.
Second.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
That passes, thank you. First item on our agenda is going to be a legislative item, item two point one GPA twenty twenty-two dash zero three, an amendment to the Western Weaver General Plan, adding an addendum to the general plan addressing moderate income housing reporting requirements per HB two, or excuse me, four sixty-two. Copies of the proposed amendment can be found at the link. Mr. Kobe.
Trying to share the screen. I understand some of you haven't had a chance to look this over, or didn't bring hard copies. And the talking points here. You guys see that, is that in front of you guys too? Okay. So in this type of report, I point out, and we've talked about this before, it's been a couple of months, so I don't need, I don't feel like I need to get completely into it, but with in association with House Bill four sixty-two, uh, which passed last year and became law, we had to make some changes and adjustments to our general plans, so uh, the general plan changes, uh, rather than going in and actually change the text of the general plan itself, we as staff, we gleaned out the general plan sections that would apply to different strategies that were required under House Bill four sixty-two. We came up with some implementation strategies that hopefully help us uh, in the future with our reporting and with putting things in place so that we can get these strategies and those, so that's what you have in front of you.
I'm sorry, do you want me to say that all over again quicker this time?
So, uh, I'm, I'm mostly here to answer any questions and, and according to the formalities of our code and things, we have to have a public hearing. So, um, that's why this is on the agenda in front of you like it is tonight.
One question, and it might be unrelated, but I seen there was an article in KSL here last week about some new proposed legislation that's going to come this year. Possibly with this kind of fall in the realm of that as well.
This would, and so our, our purpose is to meet both the requirements of HB four sixty-two as well as, uh, any additional requirements that may be put on is really that article, and I read the same thing, sent it around to the planning guys because uh, we definitely want to be in front of any kind of anything like that. The, they, they want to tighten it up and make it so that uh, there are is more significant penalties and, and there was even some discussion, and there is every year about tying it into the DNC road funds.
TIP funds won't really hurt a, an agent, you know, a city or a, at least us up here, but you take your class B on the way, that'll
That's significant, yeah, and, um, so yeah, that's, that's where we're at. If, if we approve, approve this tonight, it goes through the county commission and gets approved and, and on the books and everything. Um, we shouldn't have any problems running afoul of, of any of that until well, even as we go through the next reporting years um, with moderate income housing, we should, we should be okay. So this is an effort to get out in front of that kind of it's a good question, good observation.
Well, I didn't like the part that they want to take the public voice away from a lot of the other meetings in the other part of that article.
Yeah, that, I'm not gonna have got philosophical or political on that point, but, uh, that's, uh, yeah. It's an interesting idea. I'll just leave it that way.
What it was is, I don't know if you guys all noticed or seen that it was basically the uh, he's out of West Jordan, I believe, uh, one of the representatives from down there is proposing the streamline the development process and take public comment out of a lot of the oh, well, uh, basically you get one public comment period and then the rest of it, it's a streamlined process, so. Yeah. Be interesting to see how that, if it does get enrolled for one and two, what changes are made by that time, so. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, so probably the best thing to go through with this, at, at least especially for my sake, and I don't know for others, but why don't we hit the highlights of, I know we went through and adopted this plan a couple of years ago, but it probably would be good to get a little bit of a refresher.
Okay, well, the, on, on the first page, well, actually it says page two, but it's, uh, the first page under the exhibit. Um, we look at, uh, eleven different scenarios, eleven different strategies that come directly from state code. That's one of the problems that, uh, arose in this process is that in the general plan, we address these specific things in, in different language and the statute requires that we use this specific language in the code or in our general plan. So that's why we've adopted it as you see it and as it reads, uh, in the bold, uh, each of these letters, um, correspond to the, the different section of the state code as, as, uh, as it applies, so you'll see that. Then we, what we did again was we looked at the different areas of the general plans from Ogden Valley and from Western Weaver and, uh, hold those, those, uh, sections of the general plan which seem to apply to those strategies, and then like I said, we put implementation timelines with those, so. Yeah.
So what's the, I guess, given the market that our housing, the, the housing market we're seeing today, I mean, it proves to be pretty difficult to meet this. I mean, is, what's a possible solution for that?
Uh, you know, we are not the central Soviet. We are not a housing authority. The county doesn't own land on which to build homes. The county doesn't have funding with which to build homes. Um, so again, um, philosophically speaking, this is a difficult thing for a county to put in place. And the state legislature is looking for ways to make the, uh, entitlement process and the construction process and, and these other processes easier for developers to build out moderate income housing with the idea that if it's easier, more people will do it. Um, it's, it's an open question whether or not that will, I don't, I don't um, I have my opinions, but I don't restrain from offering my opinions, but you could probably guess.
No, I agree. It's, I, I mean, I see the reasoning behind it, but I think it's very tough for us to implement, you know, when it, when it says, when we, we have a plan, yeah, that's great, but how do you, how do you put the plan in place?
Yeah, right now we're in the growing pain mode where we're just trying to get infrastructure in the ground, so, um, so we're not even at the point where we can even look at affordable housing. You know, we've done a few things to possibly look at affordable housing, which I don't think we'll really accomplish it with accessory dwelling units. Um, but infrastructure is key right now, and so what we're doing from the economic side of things is we're going after funding and anything we can to get that infrastructure, uh, in the ground. And then next step is to start looking at development, but we need the rooftops in that in place before we can start to look at, looking at more density and, and things like that. Um, so it's going to be interesting to see how things play out. Um, the economy is going to be changing a lot of things with interest rates and things like that, and so I think we will be forced, um, to look at more um, multifamily housing, um, as opposed to single family housing, um, and we'll probably see more of that in the next few years. Um, you know, we've seen a lot of that in Ogden City, but that's going to trickle out, um, from there.
So I guess that leads to a question. So under the plan, uh, and I'm probably, I just don't know enough about it, but like there was a, you know, two hundred and seventy something thousand dollar was kind of where that came from. To go, how does that relate into like multifamily where it would be like a, a renter type situation there? Does this plan play into that or ownership?
It, it encourages us to look at some of those things, uh, but it's not a requirement in this stage of the game.
I don't have to be the only one answering questions. You guys got questions?
Well, I, I, I have a comment maybe, uh. What, what's the average lot impact fees on the county now?
We don't have too many impact fees. We have a fire impact fee, um, right now. We are looking at something with the parks, um, but as far as impact fees, we don't have a lot of those set up at the present time.
Does I know that the water companies, how, how much are they?
Speaking from Taylor West Weaver, our water rights impact fees about eleven hundred dollars and our impact fee to the system is, and, and I guess it's split up, the, we normally make the developer pay the water rights impact fee, and then the homeowner at the time of building permit pays the the, the building impact fee, and that's what forty, forty-three, sixty-three, I believe, so.
Yeah, I, I just, just kind of wondering, uh, you know, the course, a little bit of money does, doesn't help the situation, but you know, may, maybe there's a way to do it with, uh, smaller lots and share those impact fees between two homes instead of one. I don't know, I was just kind of thinking in my head how uh, we as a community can, can kind of look at this thing because it's, uh, it's almost like one of those things when I was working, you, you get something to do that appears to be impossible.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's sort of what this is, so, uh, you know, uh, if there's a way, I think we're going to find the thing that helps us outside the box. And so just kind of looking at that, and I think that one of the things I've challenged myself with is try to figure out, you know, how much all that is. And see if there's a way to, to, to do that, because one of the important things about homeownership, it's getting to be about the only way you can generate generational money, it's true. And so, uh, I, I think that it's important that we really take a serious crack at this thing because you know, if we just say it's too hard to do, we'd never do it. And so I've just kind of like say challenging myself to maybe get outside the box and figure out you know, how maybe we can help out a little bit. And a whole bunch of little bits add up to something that might be significant for somebody, so.
And I think that's, I think that's the goal of this legislation is to whittle away at some of these, uh, either regulatory burdens or barriers and, and help to make, move the needle just a little bit in the other direction.
I think that, that, that's the whole thing, because the needle's been going up instead of staying even. And part of that is rightly so, because everything's so expensive to do today, but it's all relative. Should be.
I agree one hundred percent, and the only, I, I mean, it's a two-way street, though, it's us that you know, like you say, lot sizes, stuff like that, but the developers have got to be on board with us too, so we've got to almost find a way to incentivize them to, to do this, and I, didn't we have like in Jacqueline Estates? Don't I remember something about when that one come through, they were supposed to have one lot that met this and there, there was two or three, was there, when that one went through? And we don't see, I don't know if that happened, but I don't know if, I mean, we don't see that a lot anymore. Even that these developers are offering.
I think that that's what Pat Burns was offering over there on the north side of eighteen hundred, smaller lot, lots, and I'm not sure. You know, we were the last thing that we did with, with that particular subdivision was in a work session. But I think that was kind of his goal was to have some smaller lots more toward the center subdivision, or at least that was his plan at that moment. And, and, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, what's affordability? I, I think that people that are at the, at the mean can't even afford to buy a house the way the, the price is now, and especially with the interest rate doing what is true.
Chair, if I can make a comment. My biggest concern is that we can make smaller lots, we can get rid of fees, but we can't determine what these home price, homes are going to sell for, and the developer isn't going to take a hit, they're to sell them at market rate, so if we can't find way limit or well, so that in the end, we can't, or there might be some ways to incentivize, we keep building housing for Davis County employees and Salt Lake City employees, and we have to provide the schools the infrastructure for them. So those are the things that I really, I really, um, battle is, you know.
The hard thing is too, is that
I want, I don't want the developers to get that excess, because in the end, it sells at market rate.
The hard thing is too, is that we were trying to play the game with developers and, and figure out ways to incentivize them not require, because no one likes to be required to do things, but um, incentivize them to do things like workforce housing and smaller lot housing and, and mixed use developments and, and higher density things, and if at the end of the day, the market's not there for it, they're left holding the bag saying, I, I, I did what you either incentivized me to do or required me to do, and now I can't sell these lots and I can't get a, a return on my investment. So, uh, Charlie and I actually talked about that earlier this week, how it just, it, this, it's really tough. It's a tough place to be. And we, we try to be creative about the solutions that we come up with to figure out ways to get people to do things and if, if at the end of the day, it has to pencil for developers.
True, true, but I think we're at a point right now, the only way to get prices down is to flood the market housing, affordable housing, and that's, I think, what our housing bill at that rate, if they can't sell them, that's to the market's advantage, and I, I have a hard time believing they won't sell.
Oh, they will.
I think they will make better margins if they make big houses.
Right.
But we need, uh, lots of affordable housing, so we get a market area for it.
What we had talked about Charlie and I was that you can, you can allow for a six thousand square foot lot or a three thousand square foot long, or a smaller lot as you can imagine. But then the developer goes in and in order to maximize the profits, they put in a three thousand or a six thousand or a, it just ginormous house. And then they charge way over market value, or not over market value, but they charge the market value for that. And no one could afford anything, so. Right.
That's right. But doesn't housing and urban development and, and those kind of programs have some sort of mechanism in, in their structure to either help people get a down payment or help keep, you know, help not necessarily, I, I think incentivize might be the wrong word for what I'm trying to say here, but try to get the developer to get the cost of that house to where it can be affordable, whether it's, whether it's helping the potential buyer with down payment money or the developer with build money.
Right, so there are, yes, absolutely, there are programs like that, Lytech, for example, is a low income tax credit. Um, low income housing tax credit, so, and, and developers can apply for that if they meet certain criteria, they can get some of their tax burden relieved and, and get some credits for putting those units in. So, yeah, there are, there are things like that. The idea is to work in, in, in concert with all of these things together, so.
Yeah, from our purview, all we can do is what we can do with zoning.
Exactly.
Correct, and, 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 you know, possibly fees or, you know, whatever, whatever else might play into those situations, but as far as you know, actually changing the economy or getting that funding, that's not what we do.
Yeah, right, and typically like for Ogden City, they have a housing authority that, um, they're able to dive into those things and those funds are more readily available um, for those type of situations in the county and as a planning commission. You're going to be looking at more design, um, and you've actually done some of those things. When you look at JDC Ranch, um, you, you have a mix of development that happened in that area, and so in essence, you have started creating, um, affordable housing um, in that area. So, you know, without even knowing it, just by design, you've started to accomplish that.
And I think Commissioner Wickern brought up, well, in your statement there, you, it, I part of that hit home to me is we're sending, we, we've got all these people living up here from Salt Lake counties that are, you know, they're commuting to those jobs, but look at what we've seen with like the Black Pine Development and Future Megasite out there. We need to, I, I can't remember if it was, it was one of the proposals to Megasite, but you know, they were bringing in their, their average job was going to be a sixty thousand dollar a year job. People can't afford the houses that are out there right now on a sixty thousand dollar a year job, and that they're going to bring several hundred of them. We, we need to make I guess that, that's where this plays into even more relevance to try and get it here to put the houses for, or the rooftops for the, you know, the, the, the potential jobs that could come.
Yeah.
Anything else?
This is, this item is a public hearing, just a reminder.
Yep. We've got a lot of public here to speak on it, but we still got to go through the motions, I guess, to to, to show it in our minutes, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing for this item.
Motion.
And a motion, we got a second, a motion, a second, all in favor?
Bye.
Passes. We're now in a public hearing. Anybody want to leave the post and go down and, and make a comment just for good sake, or?
Charlie's awful quiet tonight.
Well, we just haven't got there yet. And it's off. June knew better. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion.
Got a motion, took a second.
Okay.
Thank you, all in favor?
Bye.
That passes. All right, so now let me turn to the right page of my staff report. Um, we need to make a recommendation forward onto the county commission for this item, so there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion, Chair. Um, I'll make a motion for a positive recommendation for item GPA twenty twenty-two dash zero three for, per staff recommendation in our, uh, staff report for tonight's, uh, meeting. I didn't hear of any conditions or, or concerns in addition to that, so that will be my motion.
Thank you. I've got a motion, do I got a second? Thank you, any discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Hi.
I, that passage unanimously, thank you. Um, thanks, Bill, for your work on this. I mean, I, I, you come from this and this is your background, and I really appreciate it that you're here to help us through these. When I seen that article, it really, it really scared me when I seen him start going after road funds, so. That'll, that could hurt this, hurt a lot of areas big time, so. All right, next item on our agenda is going to be public comment for items not on the agenda. We got so many public, you know.
Rick locked the door on his way in, so.
You know, but it's sad, because this is when people really should be, you know, you you look at what that potential legislation could do, and they want to take public comment away, because it seems like they're only here harping on developers, but if people come in at this time to help these plans get in place, then they wouldn't have to harp, feel like they're harping on developers, so it's sad we don't have more here, but. Um, remarks from planning commissioners. Crickets as well.
Well, welcome as a new chair.
Thanks, I, I appreciate the opportunity to serve again. Yeah, thank you. Um, Director Grover.
Uh, just a quick item, um, with legislation that's being proposed right now, they're looking at streamlining certain things with land use, um, issues. One is with the subdivision process, uh, I visited with Commissioner Frower a little bit about this, and he wants to get ahead of the game, um, and looking at how Weaver County can be more of a model um, for them to take some of the possible language down on the floor. So what we're looking at right now is, um, possibly looking at, um, because once they get preliminary subdivision approval, there's not much that can be done. They have to just dot the i's and cross the t's. So he's wanting to have that done more at an administrative level, and then just have the preliminary approval come before the planning commission. And then the rest of that would be done administratively, um, which is basically what's happening right now. Um, so just be prepared in the next little bit, we'll have some possible language that will be coming before you looking at those things, so. I just wanted to brief you on that, Commissioner Frower, um, and he has a lot of which is fortunate, he has a lot of influence, um, down there, so.
Let me make sure I understand that, so it'll just be a preliminary in front of the planning commission?
Yeah.
Won't go to the commission at all?
Right, and, um, right now, the planning commission, um, you see the preliminary, and then you see the final, and then the final goes before the county commission, and the only thing the county commission is looking at is uh, basically the financial guarantee and that the money is posted, so it's more of a rubber stamp. And so it's like, why waste the time to do that?
Wow, I kind of like that, because then it, it, it brings that information that I was asking, right here in front of us.
We're actually making that decision.
Yeah, and that's something that you'll have opportunity to weigh in on that and for a recommendation to, um, the commission. But that's the direction that I've received, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that, um, so you're prepared. So when you see that, you're not like, oh, where did this come from?
Um, so I guess my concern is sometimes we see a preliminary that does not match the final. Do you know if there's going to be some language to make sure, like, they seemingly minor aren't so minor, I think, in, in what they do, so how how is that going to be regulated administratively, and I guess what?
It, it would be done like with minor subdivisions, there'd still be the administrative meeting that would be held and it would be reviewed, um, at that time.
Okay, I just think from like, uh, a resident standpoint, I think between preliminary and final is sometimes where we see some eye catchers, we're like, wait. Yeah, your deal, then, then you're making it to be, and sometimes I don't, I don't know, this is always intentional, but I think the preliminary is vague intentionally to, to get passed, and I think, I don't know if the developers are interested in that, but I think there are details that are put in later that are a little concerning.
Yeah, usually the concept, um, changes to preliminary, but from preliminary to final, there's not much that changes once it gets to final. Because if it does, then we'll send it back to a preliminary, and then you'd review it at that time.
Road design doesn't change there.
Right.
Street requirements and all of that should be consistent.
There's anything major of substance that changed, we'll send it back for preliminary approvaling it.
Okay, so maybe I'm thinking changes from concept to preliminary more than final.
Yeah, okay, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that happens between concept to preliminary.
Right.
That comes before you, but even preliminary, once preliminary is before you and it meets all the requirements, you can't deny it. You, it's basically you're setting the public You, it's basically you're setting the public up that they can make comments and they can deny it, but they can't. There's, there's nothing that can be done. So it's kind of giving them a false pretense that they can do something about it when they can't.
Okay.
No, and I think with this proposal legislation, it's it's just how other agencies work. Because I I feel, I mean, we had this conversation a year or so ago about allowing public comments at that time. We're not required to, but if we do. Then it's just like you said, they're going to come in here and speak thinking they're going to do something, but we're bound by an ordinance. And and our hands are tied and there's nothing we can do. Well, then they just get upset. Because it's like we don't, yeah, we're we're not listening and we're just moving it along, so.
Yeah, and also too, we have things in place with our ordinances now. That for instance, like with Taylor West Weaver or the water, they have to sign on the plat. So it's not like anything's going to slip through the door because if it's not on the plat and it's not meeting what they want. Then they're not going to sign the plat. And so there's things in place that we have that. Already addressed those things, so nothing slips through the cracks. Um engineering, they look at the financial guarantee, they make sure all the public um infrastructure that's required is in place. And so it's, there's nothing that really warrants that. Yeah, but preliminary, we'd still have that.
So as part of that process, is there a way to kind of? Almost require the concept meetings, because I think that's where, I I mean, I like. I like where we're going with this. If we simply had a concept that we could have the open discussion with them, you know, this is what we like, this is what we don't like, then they go back and design it. Bring it back as as what meets the subdivision code. And really, I mean, like you say, it's rubber stamped at that time. It goes through. But it, I mean, so rezones and that concept are really our only. Times, I guess, to to weigh in or.
Yeah, and we could definitely do that there. And I think I see a benefit from this too, because it allows. You as a planning commission to focus on planning, creating ordinances and things like that, and not worrying about these petty things that. Really, you you waste time and you don't, I shouldn't say waste time, but you devote a lot of time to that when you could be. Focusing on these other resources that could be more meaningful um to the public.
Well, really, that's our, that's our chance to the ordinance to regulate certain things. I mean, we that that's where we make the, we we don't make the. Changes when the subdivision comes in front of us, we fix the ordinance so that next time that's what they have to meet to do.
Exactly. Yep.
I I.
It allows us to kind of free up our time and then that way. You get to hear from Charlie more.
For clarifying.
Rick would, just so that I understand this, so. The last little while, we've had a few applicants come up and they're like, we just want you to either approve it or deny it, right? Like, they don't want us to table it and go back to a work session on it. Am I thinking on the same track? So if we did deny it, they would just be done?
That's more with rezones where that's been happening. And and rezones and that process would still stay the same. Nothing's changing. It's once we get to the subdivision level. It would just be preliminary, and when finals come before you, it's more of a rubber stamp for you guys, and it's more of a rubber stamp. The county commission, and so it's just eliminating that. And not really say eliminating, but making it more administrative so that it can be done quicker. And then that way, we show good faith effort to our legislatures that we are working on these things and Weaver County is taking this seriously. Yeah.
So Director, so what you're saying is that the preliminary, we're not concerned about the water?
Yes, we are.
The access ingress, egress.
Worse, we're concerned about access.
Power.
Yep, well, not power per se. That's done more at the final.
Sewer.
We're looking at um certain amount of sewer being addressed. The more detailed infrastructure is done at the final.
Or do we leave that to staff?
That would be um looking at those detailed items being addressed at the staff level. Which is done right now.
Not coming back through here for the final. No, it that it wouldn't have to come back.
It wouldn't have.
It'd be done all.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to take a lot of time on this one because I know Charlie's got a lot of stuff to talk about, but I felt this was important enough. That I wanted to brief you on this so that it wasn't just coming at you cold cocked and there was. Rationale behind it um and so it's. It's more just trying to free up your time to work on other stuff.
I figured Commissioner Frower, where he was mentioned in the article was, we we would be seeing something, so.
Well, and we're also looking at things that can. Help speed things along too, like with this moderate income housing bill that we have, there's a lot of things that they've nitpicked. And so they've sent it back to us, and then that's why we're back here right now. Um, and so we're like Commissioner Frower is looking at trying to. Find ways to reduce um the nitpicking that's happening in state level.
No, I like it. I would, I would like to see us be one of the forefronts and get this in place and.
So we may have that on our next um. Agenda um in February, so just wanted to. Give you a hands up. If Charlie can and Bill can get that put together.
No pressure. Please send us draft copy so we can follow. Prior to meeting.
And that's all I have.
Thanks, Director Grover. Mr. Liam?
Nothing. Thanks, Chair.
You bet, buddy. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn to our session. And turn the time over to Charlie.
Is it easier for you over there?
I think it's easier for Miss June if we stay over here with the recording, isn't it? No, let's just stay here. You guys all right with that? So with the change to this area, are we still moving forward with this form-based zoning ordinance?
Yeah, Commissioner Frower on this one, he has asked us to focus on other ordinances that are more pertinent. To the area, and we're close to having form-based already done anyway, but he wants to. Have us get that up to speed a little quicker and Charlie will explain it. Awesome.
Did anybody get a packet? Perfect. Okay, so I'm, these are still being changed live and in motion. In fact, I was making some changes just as they're sitting right there. So the objective of this ordinance, well, first off, I I don't recall which was listed first on the agenda, um so.
We're on form-based, well, work session one's the form-based and then the second one's general planning.
Would be okay with the planning commission if we.
It's your floor, you're on both of them, so.
Okay, great. So uh working on impl- implementation of the general plan, the goal here is so that every uh development doesn't have to run with the development agreement. Now, one of the challenges that we're going to find is that as we look at concept plans and say your rezone is based on that concept. That's going to have to run with the belt. There's no way to say only that concept. Uh, so either we're going with concepts and improving based off of those concepts. Without deviation, or we're saying our ordinances, our ordinances are strong enough. We understand this is just a conceptual idea, go and do what the ordinance is allowing. And so right now, um what I'm focused on is is still doing some development agreements, but really they're light. Zoning development agreements and they are conditioned on the applicant following concept that they provide to us. Uh, one of the reasons for that is because when they provide that concept, we could do street connectivity, pedestrian con- connectivity and take a good close look at that. However, if we do get these ordinances built the way that we uh I think we need them. Uh, all of that will be built in, and so at some point in time, we can probably move away from. One of the hard parts is having some flexibility and allowing the developer to lay the uh development out the way that they want to. While still um providing for those good, strong connections, uh social connections.
Just one question, sorry, Charlie. Why it, what's the push again away from development agreements? I feel that they're. That that they're better for the county in a sense.
So uh really no strong push. It really just comes down to preference. Um, it's a, it's one more step. Or one more obligation, I should say, for the developer. I would say if we're going to be giving smaller lot sizes than the fifteen thousand square feet that we're going to be looking at here. That we probably do want to see a development agreement because then we're giving some incentives and some benefits and bonuses. Um, the other side of it is uh the donation to the park. I don't know how to call it anything other than a donation. Unless it is through that kind of an agreement. If you write it in the code and say it's required, it's no longer a donation, and we might be running afoul of the impact fee uh act. Uh, so.
I agree with you one hundred percent. I I think that, you know, it just, it 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 might be an extra step and some, you know. Could be a boilerplate form and you just throw in the stuff, but it it gives the security on the county and the developer bowl. Because then you're not digging back through meeting minutes and what was said and, you know.
I think you're absolutely right. And what we have started doing with development agreements is recording them to the property. They're always recorded to the property, but showing them on uh GeoGizmo. So when you click on a particular development, you'll be able to pull up the development agreement that runs. So it's not getting lost. It's actually mapped and Geo-referenced. It's not stuck somewhere in the bottom of the reporter's office. Uh, so. Uh, hopefully we can keep track of all that.
I like that.
My big issue with development agreements is is when we do something substantially different. And we should only be doing substantially different kinds of development agreements for big uh developments, meaning. It's just the small twenty, thirty lot subdivisions should be fairly standard boilerplate, like you said. So. With that in mind, we're going to talk about a lot of stuff, and you're going to wonder at the end of the conversation what that had to do with what I just said. Um, there's a, there's a lot still left to do in this ordinance. Uh, and there is a lot of the ordinance that needs to be done. Um, I'm I'm getting into it and finding little nooks and crannies that um really need a lot of attention, so. Uh, we may need to pull just the important stuff out. And get that on the fast track so that um we're we're uh uh providing for the desires of Commissioner Frower. And then get the more substantive thing, items on a more. Long-term track, but um so diving in, I've got it up on the screen here. Um, one of the things that uh we need to. Refine is essentially uh terms uh that we're using. Uh definitions, so uh base density, we're just making a small tweak to that definition. That actually has more to do with form-based than it does. With most of what you're looking at here. Um, but if we are doing any kind of calculations that use base density, like if we do end up ever using the cluster subdivision uh tool again. Uh, base density would. This definition would apply. We're just trying to make it a little bit more clear on how it applies across the board. I don't know why D definitions are stricken and re-added in. I think that was a function of word.
Okay. Should have made, looks more like the document from last meeting, the one that's on the screen.
Oh, yeah, I've I've collapsed and and expanded some, so let me follow along with you guys here. Okay. So page two. Of sixty-two. Um, that is looking at um definitions of lighting, just minor modifications to add in. Sorry.
That's what I thought.
Let's try again.
You were on the one, you were on the other one.
I was on the fourth base. I had it pulled up in order of the. Agenda. Okay. Line numbers matching up. Sorry about that. Okay. Uh, so getting into some of the definitions to make sure that uh they work uh overall, we're looking at the outdoor lighting code that Ogden Valley. Or excuse me, that Weaver County has adopted. It was originally adopted for the Ogden Valley. We then. Transferred it over to be applicable to cluster subdivisions out west. Now we're just looking to strike cluster and say just applicable. Uh, and we'll scroll, we'll scroll down to that. That's near the end um what that full code is. But adding in or just making sure it's clear for you guys to see and clarifying some of the uh. Uh, the details, uh direct artificial light. So uh June was so kind to remind me a little little bit ago that um I oversimplified what direct artificial light is. Uh, direct artificial light isn't just seeing the light bulb. It's if you have a light bulb behind a translucent or semi-transparent um shield. That also becomes the direct light. So instead of your bulb on the inside, now it's the outside of it that is the direct light. Uh, and that's essentially what this says. Direct light is also light that is reflected off the inside reflector. Of your lighting device, as long as that reflector is intended to uh convey light. Um, if it's just part of the lighting device and it happens to reflect off, then that's not necessarily direct lighting. So we're just looking at the mirrored surfaces on the inside of these lighting devices here. Any questions about light? Okay. Looking over to. So one of four twelve one. Open one, so sixty-eight in your packet, line sixty-eight. Well, actually, if you, if you jump up to sixty-four in your packet, um that says that we are in the residential estates, or excuse me. Uh, bounds down to line sixty-six. That is, it means we're in the residential zone. So I started looking at the residential estates zone, and that one has the RE fifteen in it. And we were really thinking maybe about using the RE fifteen zone for the uh uh fifty thousand square foot requirement out west. And as I got. Kind of pulling apart, there's a lot allowed in the RE fifteen zone that I, what I heard from you guys recently is you don't necessarily want to farm animals. Are allowed in the RE fifteen zone. So I thought, you know what, maybe we let our fifteen, RE fifteen be what it is, where it is, and go with an R one fifteen. That is uh placed in the residential zone. So no longer looking at residential states, we just leave that one alone. And on line sixty-six, you see there's an R one fifteen added in with the R one twelve and R one ten. We have an R one twelve and an R one ten, but we don't have an R one fifty. So that's. You know what? I could change it, although we'll have to rezone all the properties. Oh, interesting. Uh, it is interesting because we don't follow, it it is a naming convention, and there is a consistent naming convention. There's several different uh naming conventions that are out there. But we don't follow them with all of our zones. For example, we've got an R two zone, we have an R three zone. Um, so. Yep, you got it.
So Charlie, on the, on the RE fifteen and RE twenty, they'll have potential for a little more. Or a little less, I'm not sure, but but it, because they're, they're considered an estate lot, so.
Yes.
Little more open.
There are a lot more uses that are allowed in those, actually quite a few more uses allowed in those. Now, some things like animal uses, animal uh husbandry, family food production in the RE fifteen. Require a certain amount of acreage, that's more than fifteen thousand square feet.
Okay.
Um. What I've been hearing is maybe that kind of uh impactful uses don't fit in these kind of neighborhoods. And so let's just focus on residential neighborhoods essentially. So the list of things that are allowed in these residential neighborhoods is pretty small. Uh, compared to the RE fifteen.
But on the RE fifteen and RE twenty, that that means that there would be larger lots that would allow for more.
If something like um animal husbandry. Yep. Correct. Yes. Yeah, correct. Yeah, I would love to just go to all the lots that are zoned, are are RE fifteen and change it to R one fifteen. But that requires a rezone, a hearing notifying everyone who's in those zones. Um, yeah, yep, that's right. So I figure just, I'm not usually one to come and suggest we add more zones, but in this particular case, I think. So I figure just, I'm not usually one to come and suggest we add more zones, but in this particular case, I think. It's a different enough area, uh, and it's not well established with chickens already, so. But actually it is, but we're gonna be re-establishing it as we said about it.
Native chickens. Come with the property.
The urban chicken, yeah. Okay, so uh, as we dive into line sixty-eight and uh, below for the next few pages. Um, we're talking about the R one fifteen zone. It's also applying to the R one twelve and R ten, R one ten. So we just wanna make sure we're not causing any problems with that, but and I'll have it up on the screen so you can. See them on the screen as well, but um, so I'm deleting out permitted and conditional uses. In favor of going with the formatting that the rest of our code is moving to. So in fact, I would love to grab all the other R zones and put them in this table as well. I just don't know, we're gonna have enough time to do it, so we're, we're just. You guys know this, we've done this for the last several years, start grabbing them and consolidating, consolidating them together. Um, so we now have a little bit more clarification in that tighter, that title paragraph that says the following tables display the uses permitted. Conditionally permitted um, and not permitted. So in your packets, we're on page five at the top, line one oh four. Uh, it tells us what the Ns and the Ps and the Cs mean, uh, whereas before it didn't really clarify that much. It also tells us that an accessory use uh, is prohibited unless located on the same lot or parcel as the main use, that's line. One oh nine, and something that I found to be really important that our code didn't do before we started doing this recently. Is say, a use listed as a main use unless, sorry, a use. A use listed is a main use unless listed in the accessory uses. Um, it's important to know that because when you're looking at everything that's not in this table that's labeled accessory uses, that is a standalone use. It can happen by itself or it could happen in tandem with another standalone use. So you can have a limited agriculture and child daycare and a cemetery and a residential use. I mean, you can have all those together. There's nothing in our code that says you can't have more than one main use of your property. So uh, but adding in those accessory uses, we do have other um, provisions in the code. That specifically, specifically apply to accessory uses, for example, parking lot. We don't want it to be construed that a parking lot, that a lot by itself can be used as a parking. Um, that the parking lot needs to go with whatever the use is. Now, if this was a commercial zone, I'd tell you something different. Somebody can put a parking structure or parking lot, they could charge people to park there if they wanted to, and that can be their. But in a residential zone, you don't wanna see a whole lot of parking. Okay, so with that in mind. Most of this doesn't change, but there are a little tweet, a few tweaks here and there. Um, for example, let's run up to the conditional uses, conditional uses, educational institutional identification sign. You won't find that listed, at least I don't think you'll find it listed in the table, cuz I don't think we need to say. Uh, and I don't know that we could actually apply a conditional use requirement to those education uh, facilities. We already have sign requirements, that's actually further down in the uh, proposal as well. Um, so they just have to follow whatever sign requirement, sorry. Uh, private park or playground, um, you'll see that I addressed that just a little bit differently. The only things that are left over as a conditional use is public utility substation and water storage reservoir. Uh, so change water storage reservoir cannot say developed by a public agency. But to say developed by a public utility provider, service provider, so that way we're not. Trying to debate what a public agency and whether or not Hooper irrigations a public agency or. Otherwise, so that gives more flexibility for those private service providers to be, to be. Um, residential facility for elderly persons, I'm not quite sure why that was listed as a conditional use. While residential facilities for disabled persons is listed as a permitted use. We talked a little bit uh, more than we probably need to about this in our last meeting. We're gonna need to do some streamlining of this uh, in the end anyway. I just uh, plunked this right back up to the permitted uses. We've got a full code um, that is want, to the extent it's allowed for us to apply it to them. Uh, we can apply, and so I don't think we need to send them through conditional use. A lot of this is just, when we're talking about conditional uses, it's just remnant of the day when we used to think that we had discretionary control. When it came to uh, conditional uses, uh, and then court cases happened and the state code changed that said you shall approve conditional uses. Uh, so basically, uh, permitted use with conditions. Okay, so accessory uses, accessory building, accessory dwelling and accessory use. Home occupation, it's gotta be accessory to a residential use though, obviously. Um, household pets, kinda silly, you've gotta list that. I don't know why it's listed, but this, uh, we're, this isn't the only zoning code you'll find that. Um, main building, so if you're, if it's not for a residence or uh, you know, maybe it's a, a main building for a different kind of use. That you see further down allowed, um, that can be allowed as an accessory. And then parking lot and temporary building, provide that temporary building is for construction work on. Okay, one of the items, so in the R one twelve and R one ten zones. You already have the use agriculture listed as permitted. We've had a lot of discussions about agriculture and residential areas. What do we actually need? So I'm putting in here a new use that doesn't exist anywhere else in the code, um, called agriculture. And then over here under special regulations. It's limited to commercial crop production in private or community gardens, no greater than five acres. Five is arbitrary, you guys choose what that number is to be. It's five, sound okay?
I would think in these smaller zones, I think it needs to go smaller.
That's a big.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big weed patch.
Yeah, so what this says is that in the smaller zone, someone can amass five acres, up to five acres. And use it for a community garden or private garden. No, no problem, yeah. Uh, I s- I saw where you're bringing one of that.
We go to a five?
I just wanna know who's gonna take care of the weeds.
I think we go no greater than two because these are all such small lots, that's just my. I was gonna say one, and I was at one too, but I figured I'd, I'd. Yeah, just because, I mean, you, five acres, that's two hundred thousand square feet and you got two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, that's. Exactly.
Pretty big.
You could manage, you know, a bunch of garden boxes and stuff and have a nice little deal on, on an acre and, and two's probably pushing up, but.
So acre, two? Acre and a half? One.
One. No.
Yeah, probably not an issue, I agree. Uh, you're just basically giving away land at this point. Um, okay.
Yeah, but if there's a twist that can be taken advantage of, what he was trying to do.
Yeah, well, the twist is that they have five one-acre lots right next to each other and still do, but so it's still possible. Uh, I think it's gonna be hard for us to say you can't do it, but. Okay. Yeah, I mean, if they wanna divide it up five different ways. Okay, child daycare, you guys okay with a daycare center being in a residential neighborhood? Okay, so it has to meet all the same residential setbacks or all the same setbacks of the zone. It's just a, it's not a residence at this, at this point. It could be inner residence, but. Yeah, so conditional use because it is in a residential zone, we wanted to address where the park is gonna go, circulation, pickup, drop off. And I'm, I'm okay with going permitted on that, I just, I, I'd wanna write standards for. Any issues with the cemetery in the residential zone?
Quiet neighbor.
Yeah, that one is not currently listed in the R one twelve and R one, so it's a new use to being added in. Um, church, we can't actually do a whole lot about that, so um, permitted across the board. Uh, private park, playground or recreational area, I did list that as a conditional use, I meant to list that as a permanent use, so. Tell me how you guys feel about this. That's right.
Be like an HOA type park.
That's right, and I thought, I thought it through all the way, and if you're doing a private park or a playground. That has not been approved as part of a subdivision or development agreement. Then you need to get it as conditional use, but if it has been approved as part of that subdivision or conditional use. Uh, or excuse me, or a development agreement, then it's a permitted use.
Cuz we're gonna have people jumping over that and then wanting to build a private park in one of these subdivisions, huh?
Yes, and it says.
Well, like, just a standalone private park, I guess, was what.
That's right.
There's some places in Hooper that have. That look pretty sketchy in their backyard, so.
It says no.
Safe at all.
No privately owned commercial amusement business, and I mean, there's a, maybe a few different ways that can be read. If there's any error in interpretation, we have to do it in favor of the landowner, if it's reasonable. Um, my question for you guys is, would you be okay if I had a private park and I charged you an interest fee? It's not, it's not an amusement business, but it is a for-profit venture.
What would be the difference between that and like, the pickleball thing we approved a few, a month ago or whatever?
Business.
Recreation, right?
That's right. So is it okay to have that kind of?
Commercial record.
That's right. Yeah, it becomes cur- commercial. Yeah, so, so motivations change a little bit when there's profit to be earned, right? If it's a philanthropic, philanthropic group, uh, nonprofit group, a government agency, it's totally different. If it's someone who knows it's private, it's HOA or whatever, and uh, that they can't charge people, it's totally different. And so I would almost rather this say no, um.
I was.
No money considering.
Well, I think just not permitted in any three zones. Yeah, that's why I said when you talk about HOA.
Okay.
Across the street and you still wanna use it, okay, pay us a fee to help with the maintenance that we're in.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, cuz I, I.
I don't think we're gonna see it.
I don't think so.
Someone coming in and.
One of these.
I think at the midpoint by the statement you put in the special regulation.
Yeah, okay, good.
Hey Charlie, just backing up just for a quick second, on cemetery, is that any cemetery, human, animal? Is there, is there any specifications with that?
It's a good question.
Cuz I mean, animal pet cemeteries are getting pretty common, right, or popular? I don't know about common, but for sure.
No, I just wanted to put that in.
But if it was.
Um, I don't. Yeah, I don't know that we would.
I mean. I got a pet cemetery out back.
I do too, unofficial.
If you show you're right there.
There's a real big one out west. There's a lot of crosses out there.
Are you kidding?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll come back with something a little bit more. Better.
Yeah, I, I'd like that spelled down a little bit more like what uh, Sarah mentioned, because I, I. I liked it better the way you had it the first time, but I agree with the, you know, with, with what's been brought up here, so I think it needs to, that's fine, just tighten it up.
We can even say it, we've got it somewhere else in the code. I'll, I'll leave it in brackets and tighten it up. Uh, somewhere else in the code, we do have something to that extent, it says uh, no money can exchange as except for, so I'll, I'll find that. Cuz it does exist somewhere else, but not.
And essentially, it's a donation, right?
That's right.
Parks district.
That's exactly right, donation.
And the, the, my, my concern there is, is that's all great, as long as the people that start it are there to make, to manage it and run it. And as soon as that wears itself out over time, attrition, whatever.
Yeah.
Weed patch.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Um, all right, public building, just permitted, uh, public park, recreation grounds, associated buildings. So this is something owned by a public entity, uh, and then uh, public school or private educational uh, facility that has the same curriculum. Okay. Uh, residential uses, so residential facility for elderly, for um, we say handicap person. Not sure, I'm, I'm in love with the word, but again, we'll address it later, um, and then uh, troubled youth. I'm just, I'm not making changes to it other than just taking away the conditional use, but you have specific standards elsewhere. Um, single-family dwelling, permitted.
What?
And that's it.
I don't want one of those in there. Nobody wants that.
We can put them as conditional if you want.
I think we better.
Conditioned. Everybody else can stay, but.
You're taking away our process. Put these subdivisions in and make it faster by L. The hell out of them.
Um, and then utility uses, public utility substation, that's just listed as conditional across the board. Whole bunch of different types of utility substations, we're never gonna know what the details are until we get this in there. Um, and then the water storage reservoir, I just relisted it as when developed by a public utility service pr- provider. I meant to say a utility service provider. Sorry, not changing, I just say we're making it clear that uh, you're included. Uh, okay, switching over to site development standards, one of four, uh, twelve, five. One of the things you guys aren't, aren't gonna care too much about this, um, I wanted to make sure it's consistent across the, the zone chapters. Is what that section is used for, for example, um, site development standards and all the other sections that we have redesigned. To look like this is section five. Um, section four is special provisions, so if in this area up in here, we had special provisions. That was longer than this little statement here, we would write a, a paragraph for that in special or special provisions. Right now, we're just gonna say it's reserved, um, for future use. All right, site development standards. Let me how you guys feel about this, so we've got minimum lot area fifteen thousand square feet, twelve thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet. The allowance for street connectivity incentivized subdivision is still in our code. Uh, but if we're doing development agreements that are incentivizing street connectivity, we, we won't allow them to use the street connectivity provision, so. Um, in fact, I don't think we have to say that explicitly. Street connectivity.
Everybody's watching you when you're typing.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm terrible. I'll make sure that's in there. I know I, I've got it a little bit further down, but I don't think I specified that, okay. Lot width, um, let me, so in the R one twelve and the R one ten. Uh, this was, R one twelve is ninety, R one ten is, say around sixty. But thinking about front-facing garages. A front-facing garage door shall have a width that is no greater than fifteen percent of the width of the lot. So if you've got a sixty-foot wide lot, fifteen percent is nine feet. You can't have any more than single-car garage facing forward. You still have your garage door facing sideways, you could have your garage door um, in the back.
Yeah, like if you pass.
You would have to, cuz now you've got a lot that's sixty by two hundred and fifty feet long. You've got these big old skinny narrow, I don't like sixty.
I agree.
I would be in favor of looking at sixty on a ten thousand square foot law. But I think across the board, you're, you're.
We are saying minimum, I think the market's gonna tell us what this needs to be. Most of the developers that we're working with, they want with. Uh, because you don't make your house look nice, big and sexy if it's on a skinny lot. You know, all the lots here in Ogden, you can see it twenty-five hundred square foot home, and you won't even know it cuz it's thirty feet wide.
Scroll down, oh, nevermind, sorry.
You can make it look good.
In the movies, that's where everybody gets shot.
Well, so we don't say alley.
It looks, Sarah, have you been through there after it's developed and people live there though? Because it looks good during the development, but then once people live there, their cars are all over the road, because when you have a single car garage, everybody just parks.
I think it's gonna be, I still think it's gonna be hard to sell, uh, single, a new single family without a two car garage. And so if we're saying this is the standard and developer is allowed to go down to that sixty foot minimum, the builder is gonna put a two car garage in the back. It's just, it's gonna be hard to sell otherwise.
But you can only build based on this thirty foot wide. So your home can only be thirty foot wide, so half of that, I mean, that's a pretty narrow house.
That's probably what my house is.
It's, it's, it's ten on either side, but.
I thought it said.
So forty feet.
Forty feet, ten, ten foot driveway, and then you've got a double car garage in the back, right over here, just a couple of blocks north of here. Block east, there's a subdivision that Ogden City developed where the D school used to be.
That's right.
And they're just exactly like that, and, and I think they look nice.
So your site setback.
Yeah, and, and there's, and the newer homes all around that neighborhood are, are that way too, that aren't part of that same development. I think it looks great.
Your site setbacks in those kind of areas are, they, a lot of them can be reduced to, uh, five feet. So I don't know if that's something you would wanna address here. One of the benefits of doing it this way, aside from, I mean, it does kind of feel cramped at the street. Uh, but you've got a lot more homes on less street. Uh, so that's one of the big benefits I, I.
Oh, from an infrastructure standpoint, it's huge, but my concern is, is this two hundred and fifty foot now. Already fifteen lot, what does the backyard become? Same thing we're concerned of and why we're going away from acre lots.
Yeah.
It's a junk car, it's a weed patch, it's.
You got a wall.
That's a good point.
Neighbors start complaining about each other.
And we need more irises and allens. On those sixty foot lots, Sarah will come and five and five on your setbacks.
Yeah, and I'm even thinking maybe we do ten and five, ten, ten, ten being the allowance for.
Still fifteen.
Yeah.
Maybe eight.
If you do have a detached two car garage in the backyard, it does take up a lot of space. So you don't have as much weeds, um.
No, I mean, it's, I guess we're reverting back to the older styles of, I mean, maybe there's a reason why they did that back in the day.
You know, I have to. I have to admit that I was, when we were looking from moving from the country into the big city of Brigham City. We were looking for a narrow, deep lot, because we wanted to build a bungalow style house with detached garage. And so we have exactly that, and then above our garage, we have an ADU. Um, so it's.
Is that a man cave?
Yeah, it will be, and I'm so excited as of. Um, tomorrow, because my kids are living there and they close on their house, so it's like, you're gone. It's mine.
Right over.
I, I would suggest if you get an opportunity to do that little neighborhood, it, it's, it's a neat little neighbor. That, that, that whole neighborhood over there looks, looks pretty nice. One thing that neighborhood has done is with the detached garage. They've placed a detached garage on one side, and then the next door neighbors place a detached garage on that side, so they have a private space. That those two structures have created.
They buffer, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it, it, it works, it works really quite.
Well, in the alley, I have a friend that lives in Salt Lake and has one. Likes the alley because that's where all the garbage cans go and everything, it's not in front of his house. I mean, there's benefits, but there's also, I get what you're saying too, as far as, he also feels like it's a safety concern.
Well, an alley on those townhomes makes them like twice as attractive.
Yeah, but yeah, it gives you a buffer between the people behind you, right?
Did you see all garage? No, I, I like it.
So ten on one side, five on the other, except five on each, if each lot is alley loaded in the rear of the lot. You guys okay with that?
On the fly.
We'll change our mind.
Well, I said, so that's like, I see.
It's okay. And developers are gonna gauge the market and see what the market will provide. They'll, they'll give wider lots if they don't think they can sell otherwise, but. You can save them a little bit of money on street infrastructure as well, if you, if you allow it to go this way.
Well, it, it gives some higher density to an area that's a weird shaped piece of ground to begin with, too. And, and so to me, I think it's something to be taken advantage of if, if it's suitable and economics. Will allow it.
Yeah.
Jump back up to. So on our minimum front yard, then if we're gonna, you know, we're talking, cause we're not gonna be parking cars in the driveway in front of the house and stuff like that, do we wanna lessen the? Front yard setback.
Up to you guys, this is actually less than the R one twelve and R one ten, it's ten feet less.
And what is it?
Thirty.
Twenty, uh, proposed at twenty here, one screen.
I, I wouldn't want any less than fifteen.
I, and then that was the number I was thinking, just my concern on a front yard setback in, you know, on a bigger lot's gonna be. Storage for vehicles.
Yeah.
And essentially, this is pushing all that storage in the backyard, so. To give them some more space in, if you're pushing that garage back there, I'd rather see this lessened, because what is your front yard? We're trying to be water wise, we're trying to be, you know, let's, let's push that closer and.
Yeah, medium trucks. Yeah, it's about my suburban. My, my suburban with a hitch on it was twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
So, yeah. But if we say, or if the lot is rear loaded. Ten, fifteen, what do you guys wanna do?
If it's rear loaded, I say go to five.
No.
You've got, you've gotta figure, you've got your park strip and your sidewalk and.
Me too. Fifteen for me.
Even if it's rear loaded.
Give you, yeah, give you space for a tree. Okay. Right. Uh, let's see, there was something I wanted to.
If you're spitting sunflowers or sunflower seeds or watermelon seed, you don't wanna hit somebody walking down the road if you're sitting on.
That's right, yeah. I won't be sitting on my front porch. Maybe the back porch.
We can require a mandatory spit soon or something built in. Okay. Minimum for other, so this is a side yard, so regardless, twenty feet or fifteen if, if rear loaded, but on the side yard. Minimum for other main buildings, so that'd be a daycare center or whatever other buildings we already mentioned could, can happen. Uh, accessory building will, uh, is already required to follow the minimum. Oh, sorry, accessory buildings here, accessory building ten feet except for one foot, if located at least six feet in the rear of the.
It's gotta go behind.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's how it should be. What you're talking about is, is another entity in the neighborhood that it's kind of non-residential, so to speak, like you said, a daycare.
Church, uh, daycare center, school, other uses that are allowed in the zone.
Well, depending on what it is, I mean, if it's a little, you know, i- if the, if the. And.
It's like your garage, if you're putting it behind your. Be one foot.
Yep.
Side.
That's right. There's a totally different section. We're okay with the twenty for the main buildings, but. And then, so twenty for the main buildings, twenty for the side, if it's facing a street, you know what, maybe we can address that. You know what, the R one twelve and the R one ten zones actually have a pretty clever provision already in it that I took out. Or average of the block. So if you do have, for example, you're on a corner lot, uh, but, and all the other homes are facing, but your side is, uh, facing. And all those other homes are fifteen, cause they're all alley loaded, uh, why not fifteen instead of twenty? That's right, um, and everything has to follow that standard, it cannot be the side triangle, side triangles. Good, uh, observation there. Okay. Rear yard setback. Should we say thirty feet and less alley loaded? Main building.
The main building.
Do you wanna see a garage one foot off the back property? If you got an alley. And one foot and then your garage door faces right there. Would you rather see five or ten feet just to give the car space to this way?
Makes more sense to me.
Depends on the width of the alley.
Who owns the alley, you know, is that?
That's. It's a fantastic.
You know, a lot of those in the older neighborhoods are right on the edge.
Yeah.
I don't even know if there's a foot on some of them, there might be, but it's, it's pretty minimal. A garage door would be right on the edge of the asphalt, if there's asphalt or the edge of whatever it is. That's true.
Yeah, but you have the trucks.
Okay.
But I think that actually functions better in a people with an alley.
Okay, I think that's fair, that's, let's, um, let's make it that then, let's see.
It was very loaded and you're trying to get it back.
I think where the alleys will be, they'll all be a P R U D.
Did you say fifteen? Rear loaded, rear facing garage shall have a rear setback in less than fifteen. And then everything else could be one foot off the rear.
If it's not, if it's not rear facing.
Right.
So it says, um, accessory building, corner lot, rears on a side yard, adjacent lot. It can still be one foot according to. Side setbacks, right? So I don't know why it couldn't be one foot in that scenario. I'm trying to visualize this to get it right.
So if it's a corner lot and you've got an accessory building in your backyard, and you put that garage, uh, right up next to the street. Uh, there's nothing else along that street. Yes.
But no, it says. Ten feet where accessory building on a corner lot, rears on the side yard and the adjacent lots.
When the lot, the back of the lot. Meets up with the side of, so I don't.
Yeah, so the, the street side would have to have the setback. But.
That's right.
Next to the side of the house, I don't know why that couldn't be one foot.
On the opposite side, it would be one foot, right, so. So one of, yep, you're right, it is written funny. Okay, I will put some thought into that and.
Charlie, is there restrictions on alleys, on how wide that needs to be?
Yes, and that's more in the form base, but we're gonna wanna transfer the stuff to make it generally applicable.
Do you offhand, do you know what it is?
Uh, our minimum for the form base is, uh, thirty-four feet. That includes five foot sidewalk on both sides and a travel lane of twelve. Uh, two twelve, two twelve foot travel lanes.
Well, that being said, what's that?
Yeah, it is.
It's a small street.
That's, I mean, so. That being said, I, I'd probably be more comf-, I'd be okay with the one foot setback on the back, yeah. That why, why take away and make them have an extra fourteen feet, you know?
My suggestion in the residential areas is you cut that down a little bit. The whole reason for the form base is, oh, sorry, that's the form base related to just those commercial and multifamily areas. Yeah, now our engineers are gonna have a really hard time with that, but we'll, we'll explain it to them, uh, a little bit.
And, and alley situation to me doesn't, doesn't have a sidewalk, it is a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly right, it's a pathway, it's a.
I mean, yes, you can get a vehicle in and out of there, shouldn't, shouldn't be passable, I don't think, may, maybe, but barely passable. And that's it, that's the, the width maximum, so. Yeah. There is some, just, this is a tidbit, um, there's some legislation in place that is looking at road pavement widths. Um, cannot be created in twenty-four feet. Um, and Ogden City is proposing that it's gotta be at least thirty-two feet because of the fire district standards.
And our requirement's thirty-six.
Yeah, so it's gonna be interesting to see what happens there, um, and, uh, Charlie, just FYI. I'm setting meeting up with engineering and us just to chat about that.
I actually love it, I'm trying to convince the engineers to go on a road diet, nobody wants to go on a diet. I mean, I don't want them to die.
I'm perfectly fine with it, as long as we take away on street parking.
So that is ideal. That's exactly right.
I don't know, but I mean, if you, I'm good with seeing it, because it's, you, you, the thirty-six foot cross section of asphalt. You need twenty-four of it to pass, you've got an additional twelve foot that's just a huge expense to maintain.
Yeah.
Not just, you know, plowing everything, it just, it needs to go away.
Yeah, I live on a really small residential cross section, uh, now it's not a through street, so it's not that big of a deal. Uh, but we do have to pull over, let people pass, I actually like it, cause people go really slow down that road. Um, and we do have to park on both sides, cause we've got single car driveways. Um, I'm okay with it, it does make people go really slow until you get to the collector's street, once you get to the collector's street. Uh, you know, we should probably prevent it parking after we've got one in.
So Charlie, in that situation in your neighborhood, where does the snow go when they're moving it?
Uh, it goes right up to the curb, which basically in my front yard. Um, now, if, if people are parked, the plow goes right down the center of the road and just pushes it right up against the cars.
Which they should.
Yeah, we gotta go out with our shovels and we never get that snow, but.
I like.
I don't like that bill, just FYI. I don't like that bill, but I just wanted you to be aware of.
Well, so.
Haven't seen that one.
So for, for an alley situation, do they, is it a requirement to have, to be able to get fire equipment down, something like?
We won't call it a street. And so we'll try and get over, around it, so we're not calling it a street. I don't mean to, that we're trying to circumvent what they're doing, but it's just a driveway.
Right. In some townhomes that I designed at Ogden City, if you had less than twenty-nine feet. From a garage to a garage, you could. If you have twenty-four feet, it doesn't work. Um, you need twenty-nine feet at a minimum, and that's with a large truck, a normal sized truck. So.
So is that the verbiage we need in this, when we, if we're saying these accessory buildings that are rear, um. Yeah, rear loaded, do we need to make sure that that alley or, we're not calling it a street, that alley is a certain width before we, if we're gonna allow the one foot off?
Yeah, we definitely need to have that somewhere in our code. I don't know if it belongs in this section of code, or if it belongs in the supplemental standards, I, I gotta look at that, but.
I mean, we know most people don't park in a garage anyways, they just load them with crap, right? As well, but, but still, if somebody does wanna be able to do.
The area where we talk about alleys.
Yeah.
Uh, and then just maybe have it reference it. To that section. When I move there, I just want a door on, on, on both sides, so I can drive in and drive out the back.
Drive out in your, your jazzy chairs.
That would be ideal.
Cause that's what I'd be looking for, right?
Yeah. And, and then if I'm.
Yeah.
Board, I'll go the other way.
All you'll need is.
Did you find in that development, um, if you had garages in the back? Did you find in that development, um if you had garages in the back? So if we say a a rear facing garage needs to be setback from the rear property line fifteen feet. But then on the other side, you've got a side facing garage that's setback one foot, I'm trying to map on. Kind of radius would that be, I'm trying to pull out on a, even if it is a twenty foot wide alleyway. You think? That changes thing a little bit, if it's not, if it's not rear facing garage to rear facing garage.
Straight across from each other, kind of offset.
Right.
You do run the potential of a fence being right there.
Right.
And so it's. That it it could, yeah, be the same thing.
Uh are you thinking even with a fifteen foot setback? It's just depends on how wide the alley is, right? Okay. Let me, let me, I'll do some math and work with the engineers to see what kind of geometry we're working with here on for larger trucks. Minimum rear yard setback? That's okay. Good, and I think your alley standard in your subdivision code right now is minimum twelve feet, so maybe just click that out, but. Uh building height, one story, twenty five feet, not changing. Is okay with that, twenty five feet per accessory, sorry. Yep. And I don't know why we don't have a maximum here. That's weird.
Maximum height for an accessory building?
We do want a minimum as well, so let's, let's do both.
I was gonna say, when why do we want their minimum to be twenty five feet?
Sorry, minimum is for accessory building.
No, I know, but still, why do you want a minimum of a twenty five foot accessory?
Thank you, yes. Sorry.
That's a little tall for. I mean, I would li- I wouldn't mind seeing like a thirty foot maximum. On your ma- I, how tall, so if you had a. Two story with a half basement, is that kind of going for the twenty five, no, cause that wouldn't work, you wouldn't have your roof pitch on it.
Um our cluster code, we allowed uh homes to go up to forty feet, and we're pushing homes closer together in this situation as well. I'm okay with forty, I don't know if you guys.
No, that makes, I'm good with that. And 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 especially on small lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a tall building on a small lot.
Tall and narrow.
Yeah. They wanted to live in a skyscraper.
You know what they're, they're gonna do is they're gonna do what those townhomes are doing, but they're gonna individualize them, so it's a home that the bottom is just the garage and then the main floor is right above the garage and the bedrooms are. I think out west, we're not gonna see a lot of basements. But okay, thirty five feet. This is what I'll used to say, it really wasn't very well put together and we don't have a lot, a lot of R one twelve and R one ten zones, so we haven't ever had the need to really update it. Sign regulations, I'm slowly trying to move those from all the zones because we already have sign code. Okay.
So as we go through the subdivision process and 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 go to these uh fifteen thousand. Lots, fifteen thousand square foot lots and possibly the the twelves and tens as well. Are they gonna be? Rezoned to be called? An R one and R ten and R fifteen, or are they still gonna be an ag zone with, you know, with a, with an asterisk?
Have to be rezoned to the R R one fifteen, R one twelve and R one ten.
Good.
I don't see us doing a whole lot of R one twelve and R one tens, I see us being flexible with R one fifteens. Um to allow some smaller lot sizes within the R one fifteen.
Just for an average or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, moving down to, so now we're in the subdivision code and we're in final plat requirements. Um we're adding in, I'm I'm gonna take this opportunity because I think we're gonna see this fairly quickly, especially if we're doing narrower lots. Uh the uh ability to do shared private lanes. Um tell me how you guys feel about this, we've talked a little bit about shared private lanes in the past, uh we just. Uh didn't get a follow through all the way because the Ogden Valley Planning Commission uh pumped the brakes. Uh because they wanted to do a little bit more detail, now this was two years ago, so we. We pulled, we were dealing with private streets, which you guys said, no private streets out west, which is nice and easy, thank you. Uh and then in the Ogden Valley, uh they have some allowances for private streets, it's a little complicated, the situation in which they are allowed. But a shared private lane is essentially, it's still getting access, um it it's still requiring um access across the front property line. Uh but this is not a street, you put a gate on it if you want to, the width of it is smaller. But the caveat being. It cannot replace the requirement for a street. So if you do a shared private lane, let's say, so your code requires section line and quarter section line streets. No, no excuse, gotta do this, and so if this is near one of those streets, developer has to install uh a section line and quarter section line street. But maybe they're one street over. And their uh lots rear on that section line or quarter section line street. Uh but they don't want to pay for a full street. Yeah, maybe they do a shared private lane, but we also don't want that shared private lane to be so long. That uh it interrupts the block uh length. And so uh block length, we're doing, oh. I haven't added that in, we're doing eight times the minimum width of the lots, and so we're essentially talking about sixty times eight.
Four eighty.
Oh, thank you, four eighty, yep, I was doing four. Um. So four hundred and eighty feet is your minimum block length. So in this case, if you did a shared private lane, you'd have to do it significantly shorter than four hundred and eighty feet, otherwise we would require that street either. I really don't see us doing shared private lanes very often, but.
Shared, what what can be on a shared private lane, how many, how many residences or how many front doors can be on that?
Uh we'll scroll back, we'll scroll down and and look at all of that, but the context, let me give you the context, um. Uh the engineers actually uh took some of us planners over to a development over in uh West Haven. Uh to show us how terrible, terrible it is, and he said, this is great. And uh one of the things that they had was they had single family homes stacked, well, it. It's the um six pack that we saw in the uh JDC Ranch uh development. Where you had single family homes um stacked deep. And then a shared private lane that went, uh so you had three of them, and a shared private lane that provided essentially the access to. Uh in West Haven, that is just off four thousand south. Couldn't give you the exact address. Perhaps.
Or Joneses, is Joneses that way?
I think it is a Nilson Development, Nilson Homes Development. Yeah, north of four thousand.
Okay.
Um it's, it's not terrible, and we went there to talk a little bit about width, street parking, just really trying to get, wrap our head around. Doing smaller lot sizes because uh engineers aren't quite used to uh doing that yet. And we had the opportunity to stop someone, she happened to be on the HOA board, we asked her how she likes living there, she said she loves it. The only thing she wanted was the garage set to be setback from private lane another two or three feet, it would've been great, because. They were only setback ten feet from the shared private lane. And in order to use their two car garage, even park in that driveway, they had to park uh almost as if they're parallel parking. Because their driveways were ten feet deep by twenty feet wide instead of the other. Uh it's something certainly to think about, and if you ever get the opportunity, if you know what it is to go out there, so it's worth the drive through. Um so with that in mind, we might be able to see these, Daybreak has a lot of these little things, we're just. A shared driveway is all it really is, we're just calling it a lane so that we can put a specific definition in our code and say it has to meet these standards.
Again, right up here, couple blocks over, one block up, same thing, the the ones on the west side of that subdivision. They have, they homes built on two sides and the shared driveway that goes down. In the middle, and then they, then they can turn and go into their garage. Lane.
Yep.
Charlie, um you can always do this in an HOA, correct?
No, no, right now our code says you have to have access across your street frontage from a public street in Western.
Cause I would be fine with these, they just have to be in an HOA.
Part like part of it, oh, I see what you're saying.
They have to be in it, yeah.
So, yes, and we are addressing that.
I'm sorry, not an HOA, I mean, uh.
P R U D.
A P R U D, right now you could do that in a P R U D, correct?
Correct.
So I don't see allowing it outside of a P R U D. I think you do a P R U D and you have an HOA, you do it this way, but.
Is it because the P R U D has the HOA?
Uh partially that, but also because um we have more control over what happens in a P R U D and we can kind of, we can avoid all of the weird. Runarounds that we're worried about with the main roads being used and um. So I don't see a need for them outside of a P R U D personally.
Okay.
So I have a question that might tie into that. Do flag lots fall under subdivisions?
Yes.
And this, I could see a flag lot needing this, right?
So flag lot is a slightly different standard, but if you had, imagine multiple successive flag lots. Um right now our code says you can't do that with a flag lot, a shared private lane.
Which is necessary for a. Flag lot, right?
For developing, so if you've got lots that are going around the outside of a block and maybe. Uh it's the minimum or it's the, we've got as many block connections as we need. And you've got space inside of that that hasn't been developed yet, you might need to get access to that somehow in order to divide that up. Right now, where we don't have that allowance, you're essentially saying, all right, it's just gonna be a bigger lot in that area. If you do put a shared private lane, you may be able to get a few more lots.
But we still have allowed flag lots, correct?
We still do allow flag lots, and that's something uh different in this code, and that I am writing a little bit differently, so we'll address that as well.
Well, maybe allowing the shared, because I can see two homes sharing a driveway.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe four homes, so maybe we limit the number of homes.
Okay.
Outside of a P R U D, but putting like six homes, I think you're getting into P R U D territory, I don't know, what do you think?
I mean, the only flag lots that I can think of is the one that sits behind somebody else's house, right, like they want their kids to live there and they put, and it's one house or two.
Yeah, and right now in our code, you're required to have at least three acres in the flag portion of that flag lot. Um I'm suggesting we cut that down, I know there's somebody out west who wants to cut down even more than I'm suggesting, but we'll, we'll get the details on that when we, when we get there. So let me get down to the nitty gritty on um. Shared private lanes, then let's have a full conversation. Um you guys could read for your own from information what uh the private street option is in Ogden Valley. It says private street option, but actually in some cases, we're saying private street requirement. Uh because in some cases, if you're doing a cul-de-sac. We shouldn't be, the public shouldn't be responsible for many. Have you guys?
Well, having family that have had to deal with snow removal and cul-de-sacs, that's their thorn in their side, right, those are the worst ones, so. As far as.
Okay. Let me add a little.
If I live there, I want somebody to take care of it, but if you're, if you work for the county, you don't want to, but.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a note in here, I don't know if it would get past the commission, um I'm not sure what they would say, but we can check on that, so.
So I guess that being said, even though I voiced that. Wanna look out for the residents, right, and so. I don't know what, what's everybody else thinking, I. I mean. I hate to buy, it it kind of goes back to everything we've talked about in the past, you get these people that buy something. Thinking it's gonna be maintained and when it's not on HOA and you're, you know, you wonder why your, your taxes aren't going to take care of that for you.
Yeah, no, uh we do have a requirement, so the private, the shared private lane, there's a lot of it that mirrors the private street. And so one of the requirements is that some kind of a maintenance agreement has to be recorded to each piece of property, so when you go to buy it. Granted, you're looking at the keys while you're signing your name on the bottom line, so you may not be reading very carefully, but. Um when you go to buy it, there is a disclosure that is, that basically says you agree that this is a shared private lane and you are responsible for your portion.
Right.
And now we don't require an HOA. For it, we just require a shared maintenance.
Is that your concern, Sarah? Is it events? Uh with with too many homes on it?
Not the maintenance as much as the developers skirting the um. Regular street requirements that would be more beneficial to the homeowner and the community, so it. So I can see the shared private lane actually more in New into Highlands, I'm thinking about that right now, where it's all developed out and you're really limited on how to develop some of that um, some of that area of there. But if you're buying, you know, ten acres. I just don't wanna see a developer go in. And do a bunch of these where they could do something that was probably better for the community, so. I like to see this as the exception, I don't like to see it as a rule, I and I don't know, I, that's where I'm coming from, but I'm not sure exactly where to go from there.
Well, let's get into the details just to see if it uh equates some of that, those concerns, um and if it doesn't, uh let's address them. Okay, so shared private lane, unless specified otherwise in this section, a shared private lane is only allowed in locations where a street or street connection is not otherwise required or planned as provided in applicable general plan. Or where its placement will not violate the applicable street block requirement of one oh six two three, so it's just the minimum street block, now one oh six two three will be updated. Um. Actually, let me make sure I. Update to include the eight times minimum. Um it'll be updated to say this is how frequent your streets need to be um uh in these areas, so the smaller your lot width. The frequent, more frequent your street, your cross streets need to be, and the larger, the more spaced out it could be, so in the. Uh one acres of them, where each home is a hundred and fifty feet apart, you know, one fifty times eight, you're, you're up there pretty far before you need to start seeing spacing of public streets. Pedestrian paths need to be spaced every five hundred minute. And so that requirement goes up. Gets a little more cumbersome, I should say, yeah, for the large lots, for the small lots, your streets are gonna provide that pedestrian network, just as. Okay. Um construction of a shared private lane um. Is a subdivision improvement requirement and shall comply with the relevant sections of section one oh six four uh this land use code, so that's, the one oh six four is the um. Improvement section or the required improvements for this uh subdivision.
But the block requirement section, one oh six two three, that's gonna require a road. A fairly major road every.
Four hundred and eighty. Yeah, residential, at least a residential road every four hundred and eighty, sorry, I cut you off.
No, 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 you're, that's great, I'm, no, you're fine, Charlie, you're fine, no, that's, that, so. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't see a group of these exceeding the four hundred and eighty feet.
Right.
And so.
You might have odd configuration where you're not in a grid and you've got four hundred and eighty between, but maybe it's a, it's an octagon of intersections that go around an area of the middle, I don't know, be. Facetious on that, but, and so it could be quite a bit more space in that block, um if it's odd configured streets, but.
Four hundred and eighty not optimal. For a neighborhood, as far, I mean, that's still.
No.
Still pretty far, much bigger than we'd like to see, two hundred would be two large lots next to each other.
Right now. Yep. Okay, so um. Private uh shared private lane design, configuration and construction requirements. So a shared private lane shall be designed and constructed to have a minimum right of way width of twenty four feet with a minimum improved surface of twenty feet. Greater right of way width may be required by the county engineer for cross slope easement. Configured and constructed to safely facilitate the turning radius and weight of the fire authority's largest fire apparatus. Constructed of all weather material, having a grade of no greater than ten percent of clearance, no less than fourteen and a half feet. And if a term, if terminal. If terminal and longer than two hundred feet in length, a fire truck turnaround. We'll go too much in one sentence, but. Uh. Any thoughts on that?
So two hundred feet.
So if it's a dead end that goes more than two hundred feet.
It's, it's gotta have a turnaround.
For some reason, those guys in those big trucks don't like to go in reverse very much.
Gotta teach them how to drive.
Gotta get a rear facing steering wheel. Um okay, next one is a construction, uh so it's gotta be constructed of all weather material, having a grade. I already read that, okay. Uh it needs to be on a parcel that is held in common ownership by a homeowners association that governs the lots that gain access there from, or. The easement recorded in favor of the owners of all lots that gained access there from.
Well, so a a lot of what's in those first three paragraphs right there tells me. That if you're a developer and you're building a road to meet this. You might as well build a road.
Yeah, now, we don't require asphalt.
Hmm, okay.
So there's, there's.
There's the savings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you don't put asphalt on that, you're just gonna get gaining across, especially with everybody else driving.
Mm hmm.
That's right. Okay, um if terminal. Shall be no longer than six hundred feet, now we already know that the section, there's another, that. Okay, um, if terminal, it shall be no longer than six hundred feet. Now, we already know that the section, there's another, that the other section that says it cannot be in place. Of your blocks, um, so that's only gonna be applicable where you've got blocks that are greater than six. Um, so if terminal no longer than six hundred feet and provide access to number than fifteen residences, what I heard from Sarah a minute ago is maybe four in a Western Weaver. We'll get back to that in just a second. Um, and if terminal and longer than two hundred feet, uh, designed with a fire apparatus turned around approved by the local fire authority.
Well, see, that's, that's kind of where it ends for me, because if you have to put in enough, enough infrastructure there to turn a fire truck around. You're gonna be into the, you're, you're gonna be in it to the point where maybe it, it changes your theory on how you want to design that.
Right. I agree. Sixty foot wide.
You can, but you've got to put in one heck of a road to there to do it. Yeah, but you have to be able to turn that truck around, not, not back that truck out. You have to be able at the end of that road. After two hundred, yeah, after two hundred.
Yes, where's the conflict? I don't doubt there's one.
And, and two hundred feet at sixty, at, at sixty foot, foot, feet per lot gives you three.
So this one here, and if terminal and longer than two hundred feet in length, the fire truck turn around at the end. Oh, you're thinking about the turning radius, so configured and constructed to safely facilitate the. This is if you've got a, so you're on slopes or whatever and you're trying to do your switchbacks. Um. Maybe I can make that more clear, because I actually read it to mean the same as you thought.
So that limits it to six is what you're saying? Without doing a big turnaround, we're, we're limited to six, the sixty feet.
Limits, it limits to three lots on each, on each side of it.
I guess the question is, do we want to see that? Do we want to see a neighborhood of? These six houses off of this little street.
I, I.
And it could be done differently.
I don't, I don't now because of the fact that I don't like without a hard surface being required. So I'm getting, I'm getting less. And less uh. In like with this.
But it does allow you to develop areas that are difficult to develop otherwise, when you have limited um geometries and limited. I'm, I'm thinking specifically you went to Highlands, but I'm sure we'll end up. It, with areas out west like that. It's really just the big lots when they have big plots, have other options that I'd rather not see.
What is gonna come, come to is the same in UN Highlands is out here. It depends on how much developer buys or owns. How big the parcel is to begin with, and they're gonna try and squeeze in as much as they can.
Well, just the difference with UN Highlands is you're so limited with um. Topography.
Hmm, yeah.
That's really like where you've got the fault line in the cliff, and so I can see it not being developed otherwise, and maybe it's best to leave it undeveloped. I'm not sure.
Right.
That, we, we, and, and most of it is developed, but there are a lot of very large parcels. That maybe could be filled in, maybe should, maybe shouldn't, because we don't have the infrastructure for it, but.
I've got a question on this, and, and maybe it's covered somewhere else, but uh. If, if it's just a road with a packed road base, does there need to be uh something there for runoff water to get rid of it?
Yeah, drainage is always gonna be required. Uh, you'll have a little bit more percolation ability, not a ton, but a little bit more with your compacted road base. But we'll still need to do something with the water that comes off of it. Now, what I just added, I added a note that I should change this to say in a zone that allows greater density than one unit per acre. Those ju- shared private lanes be hard surfaced, so.
Hard surface?
Hard surface.
I agree.
Now, one inch of the acre, do you want to see twenty thousand square feet or greater? Do you want to allow for half acre lots to get access to share private lanes?
When I look at this, I, I think the first thing that comes to mind is somebody that has property and they want their kids to live there, right? Like, so.
That's exactly right.
It's. So, that's why I'm not as concerned with the hard surface, um. But. What, what do they want, a half acre or a full acre? Typically, it'd be more of a full acre, but a half. Well, it depends. If you have, if you have one acre and you have the potential to, to, you know, to change that zone, an additional. Home.
But if you're changing the zone, then you, then you have to have the hard surface anyways, right?
Hard surface, I would say that.
We did have, um, I think right before you came on the commission, we had a, a petition, uh, it was essentially this, it was a, a family that owned land. And wanted to build homes for their kids, but they wanted to configure it so that they did not have to build any county roads. And so they were avoiding, and, and it was, it was really quite detrimental to the community, because they were clustering their homes. We had no through streets. They were backing their houses to the main roads, so the main roads has no, doesn't have anyone to um. Develop that road or access, and so that's actually not the one I. That's, I worry about catering to these big farmers that have their five kids and want to have a big five acre plot. With no roads or access through them, and I know they'd be limited here, but four hundred and eighty feet is still quite large for a community if you have these. Big unpassable, unmaintained, no one paying for the roads around them kind of community.
I see that point.
It, it was only when they brought that there that I saw that, that was like.
That point, but I, I also. I want it to be, I guess, maybe vague enough that somebody like that, that's not a big developer, can make those. Changes for their family, or not necessarily those changes, or be able to do it affordably, you know?
And that's exactly what we saw, but when you're developing five or six acres, even if it's just for your family, you are a developer and you're still beholden to the community. To, to put your fair share in, because you're creating that many families just like the developer is and putting that impact into the community. So that was my concern there.
That's true.
That one she references is buttlerish.
Oh, right on, for some part, yeah.
We can always require those kinds of subdivisions to come with like a family uh agreement or uh, you know, some kind of an emancipation agreement.
You know, you know, on, on, on those, on those larger parcels like Sarah's talking about. I really think what they should come with is their future plan beyond this. Uh, generational change or generational addition to a, to another home there. Um, because eventually the property is probably going to be subdivided in some form, or at least it should be planned for. So if they do, if they do start with a road, and even, you know, okay, say, say we don't require it to be hard surfaced. At least at some point in time, if someone goes beyond that road, but they're gonna continue to use that road, it's already part of a potential development. That is not a checkerboard.
So hold that thought.
Some point, the brothers and sisters are gonna fight and someone's gonna move away and then some stranger's gonna move in and.
Yeah.
Well, one of the kids is gonna realize farming is hard and that they want to be.
Usually what's happening nowadays out there is the kids can't afford to go buy a lot somewhere else, you can, whether they're, whether they're farming or not. So it's just, this is, you know, this is a free piece of property or a really reduced price piece of property.
Right, right.
But what it does create in some instances is a kind of an eyesore later on down the road for the rest of the community, and I agree with that. I think that there should be some provision. But it sounds like you have something in there for that, Charlie.
Uh, I'm just uh giving you a teaser. Maybe we'll, we can end on a cliffhanger if we wanted to. No, uh, so getting down to the next section here. Uh, shared private lane temporarily in lieu of a street. So as long as development on other properties in the general area to which a street could extend is not imminent. A private lane may be installed in place of a required public street. Or it may be, let's see, place of the. Required public or private street, or it may be greater than six hundred feet in length under the following circumstances, so number, number one. No interruption of street connectivity, so doing so shall not disrupt the orderly build out or inhibit the future street connectivity of the area. Number two, uh, it will not be contrary to the general plan's recommendations that are specifically applicable to that area. So if we show a street on the general plan, it's no good. Number three, an easement is required, so the final plat shall convey an easement. Over the shared private lane to Weaver County for the purpose of future street convert, sorry, conversion. To a public street at a time the governing body determines a public street is necessary, if ever. Now, that language is almost taken ver- verbatim out of the uh, private street ordinance. Now, the private street ordinance for the Ogden Valley says you can go ahead and have your private street, but you have to build it to minimum. Public street standards, and the parcel that that street is on has to be deeded, not dedicated, because if you dedicate it, then it's public right of way. Deeded to Weaver County, and then we just hold on to it, and we've got an operations and maintenance agreement with landowners that say they're gonna use it perpetuity. They have the obligation to pay uh, or to pay for it, maintain it. Uh, until the county says, okay, it's no longer private. This gives the county the opportunity to exact the land that would otherwise be required for building a street. Without um, actually having to have the obligation to operate and maintain that street until a time later that the rest of the community needs that street. Make sure I said that in the right succession.
So Charlie, my concern is who pays for the street when the street needs to go through, because right now, developers are giving us the land. And building the street.
Yeah.
And if they can't afford to build it now.
Yeah.
When are they gonna build it? Because you, you can't, you can't get money from someone who doesn't have money. So I don't know who's gonna build it.
In those particular cases, it's almost like uh, on the, on the Form Bay Street Regulating Plan, some of those roads that were running through the green areas, how are we gonna pay for those? I mean, kind of the same kind of situation, um, that's where impact fees comes in, and that's where grants come in. We'd look for the funding and we fund it out of the general fund. If it's in the public interest, or a developer who's further down the road is now responsible for building a little bit more in order to get access to their property.
And, and that's where I'd say these families are acting as developers, and I think they should be held to the same standards. Like, if they want to develop their land, then they need to develop it, I think, to the same standards as a developer. That would be my opinion. I know that's harsh, but. I, I think that's, that's fair that we ask the same.
Okay, that is fair enough. Um, operations, maintenance and use, so the operation maintenance of this shared private lane shall be the responsibility of the owners. Uh, building setback, the minimum building setback shall be thirty-three feet greater than otherwise required. And shall be measured from the center line of the shared private one, that way we have a do build uh, road through there, we've got setbacks that are wedding them. Um, and then a plat note, the final plat um, shall have a note that says. Oh, this is actually the note that we read earlier, just that, that is a shared private lane, that there is some responsibility in a covenant that runs with it. Uh, the, the county can take it without paying you for it at some point. Um, okay, and then recording requirements, we basically say the same thing. It's gotta run with the covenant. Essentially enables the county to assume responsibility for it in the future. So, we have these varying degrees of public road, public now. Public in ten years from now and public in fifty years from now, and uh, public now is just public dedication. Public in ten years from now is let it be private, donate, donate the parcel to the county, we'll hold it. You don't have to pay that taxes on it, but you gotta operate and maintain the street that's in it and build the street to the full standard. And then we'll take over in ten years when another developer says they want it, or when the county sees that there's some need for it, and then there's the long term. If it's ever needed, which it might not be, uh, shared private. So, um, okay, with that in mind, let's go back to. Should it be allowed? And if it is allowed, how many homes can gain access from?
I think there are circumstances where. You know, given, given a shape of a parcel that, I think there's a need for it. I don't. Going back to how you started the conversation, I don't think there's gonna be a great demand for it. Possibly up in UN Highlands, that might be an area where, you know, where it might be more effective, but um. I probably wouldn't want to see more than the, the, the two hundred feet length.
Okay.
So whatever that can be accommodated in two hundred feet, which is three lots essentially on each side.
Yeah, so six.
So six total.
I, I am perfectly fine with uh, everybody else.
That's my.
Okay, perfect. Yes. Uh, although there'll still be some applicability in the Ogden Valley, they really, really want to see this, because they've got a lot further spaced out homes, and so. So in the Western Weaver, no, there than two hundred feet and no. Hmm, that's really wrong, but often that's it, right? Okay. Shared private lanes. Terminal streets. Cherry, you wanna break?
Sure.
Spend two hours, take five. See what it looks like from down here?
Yeah.
The fair or worse? How did you pronounce it? I like how Bren said it. No, Bren said it at first, he said witren. Just going through the supplemental regulations section. Hope so.
Bring your sweetheart.
I mean, I've done a little bit of. Concern. Information conveys too much. Just this actually. That's what she got. Got one, yeah. So just, yeah, there's. So it actually worked out pretty well that. No, they they were, there's always too much in there going. I I would use real picture, but there's almost. Like unless you're writing ordinance. Nothing is sure mean than. Four best part, right? And so I just.
They're like, there's a picture of a tree in here. Do I get, do I get that tree?
Right, right. Well, leave your choice trees there. I measure upscale, not true. But yeah, I just figured I would just. I didn't do these. These are really what I wanted to do. Fine, uh. Terms of. I don't have. Or residential, I mean residential unit. We said, I I think it was originally P. Planned unit residential. That's planned residential. Right, right.
Not to be confused like a P U D. Plan unit of them, which could be commercial or residential. Not to be confused with a P.
What was the word that Steve used earlier that I said he used, Brock? Uh, condenser, which is. I used it right this time. Oh, that's right. That's perfect. No. It's a, hold up your yellow card. But I found these images where I was able to kind of doctor them so that they actually showed what I wanted to show. Yeah, this one's. How did you find that? Uh, just search up. I mean, really, the only thing we're trying to do is. You're doing images. You have to specify, like, what is it? This is all those. I think there's the next one. Yeah, except for those wonderful. It's funny because I might, there's part of this, the sign code. Getting into that.
While we're waiting on you. Your finest. Oh, boy.
All right, let's get back.
Actually the easiest.
Charlie, you got another.
Before I'm pulling the plug on you.
Let's see if we can get her done.
Rock and roll.
Okay. Uh, we're on. Uh, so one oh six dash two dash two point five, new two point five. Or oh five oh, I'm adding some extra O's in there just to make sure we've got plenty of space to expand in the future. If we need it, um, basically, we're just making sure this says that your arterial and collector streets have to comply with what we've adopted in the general plan or any other transportation plan that we put together. So nobody has an excuse to not put in one of those white lines on the map. Well, uh, plain excuses, just no reason. Okay, street cross section and design. Uh, we previously had development on a substandard street. Now, again, we're still in the subdivision code. So if if you recall from a couple of meetings ago, we reviewed the development on a substandard street code as I've updated it. Pulled it out of the subdivision code. And popped it into the supplemental um standards. We've already reviewed that, but we'll probably get to reviewing it over time in this meeting.
I hope so.
Yeah. All the red line that you're that we're both through right here, that's all just part of the substandard street requirements. Okay. Uh, one of six, two, five. So still in the uh subdivision code. Now, what our code currently says is that we can require not more than three percent of the gross area of the subdivision for parks. Now, we haven't been doing that, but. There's gonna be a little bit, a little bit of a balancing act. If we're doing a kind of a pay to play donation to get a rezone. That might satisfy this requirement. And so we may need to write that in here uh in a specific way. We can determine that it has been completed by. Virtually donation through a development rate or something like that. Um, the other thing is we've got schools listed in here. We can no longer exact for schools. Schools have to do their own thing. That's why they're a taxing agency. Okay. It says a lot about the planning commission in here, a lot of lot of things you may see as as this comes back, we might strike planning commission, just say land use authority. Subdivisions go to staff to ju- to to just staff to review, then we have to change that as it is. Um, most of what you'll find here in the code already says the planning commission is the land use authority for preliminary and flat. And then the county commission currently is the lightest authority for final. With the planning commission's recommendation. Um, if we uh or when we go in the direction that uh Rick was mentioning, it'll just say the land use authorities, Rick. I'm gonna write his name into it and retire, quit, leave or anything. It'll always be Rick. Rick Grover, social security number, this.
Contact. Contact.
Okay. All right, outdoor lighting. So um, I know we breezed through a little bit of this when we were doing the cluster subdivision um ordinance. Got some newer faces and so. I don't know how detailed you want to get on this. Basically, when it comes to outdoor lighting, our objective was, uh, we probably had three or four objectives here. Number one. Direct artificial light needs to be shielded. So it needs to be downward directed and shielded. That does two things. It keeps it from going up into the sky and it keeps it from crossing the property. Now, when you're talking about crossing the property line, your fence can be a shield. Your eve or overhang over your front porch line can be a shield. And so if you have a lighting device that doesn't comply with the lighting device standards, because it's the device itself doesn't have a shield. You can build that shield it within some architectural feature or some landscaping feature that you put on your property. That's number one. Number two, we wanted to make sure we carved out some exemptions, because so in some cases it doesn't make sense to make everything dark. Um, especially when we're talking about safety. Um, and then number three uh. Is to look at the light that's coming. So basically, the dark sky uh association says that. The types of light that affect the night sky most are over a certain color of yellow, so twenty-seven hundred Kelvin or higher. That is the kind of light that really affects sky glow. One of the reasons why, amongst other reasons, why some of those older street lights are the terrible orange color. Um, it just, it reduces sky glow, plus that color of orange has a longer wavelength and so it actually penetrates further. That's why a lot of communities went to that. They could put their lighting devices further apart along their streams.
Charlie, I have a dumb question for you.
Please.
Is there a difference between outdoor lighting and exterior lighting?
No.
Okay.
Do we show exterior here?
Nope, just wondering.
The word exterior shouldn't be, yeah, shouldn't be on this. Uh, yep, so any light that is outside. Now, one of the things that the Ogden Valley contemplated, but the county commission wasn't super excited about, was interior lighting. That can be seen from the outside.
That that's kind of where I was leading to.
In the uh, in the Ogden Valley, you have some very big windows with some very big chandeliers. People like to announce that they live there. Uh, with those kind of devices that we just couldn't, you know, it was hard to get inside the home to regular.
Well, personally, I have an outbuilding that I put lights in and has windows on the side so I can get natural light during the day. And at night I turn it on and after a month of having that, I realized that that shines right into my neighbors across the street and I feel bad. So I put some. You know, some uh, what do you call it, tint on the windows and everything to try to minimize it because I feel bad for that, but now I'm not getting the natural light that I put the windows in for. But I don't want it shining in their front room or their bedroom windows either, you know, when I'm out there.
That's right. So I think there is something in here that says. If the sole purpose of a light that is on the inside of the building is to illuminate the outside. Then that is, that is exterior light, but I just didn't want somebody to get in and say, fine, if I can't have it outside, I'm gonna go spotlight on the inside. And it's gonna light everything up. Spit lighting. I saw a question from Marcher. Sorry, um, so let me get you to where you are.
Because I'm trying to find this on the paper. No, but but if you go over to page thirty-one, there's there's some clues there. Charlie's.
Charlie has got us.
He said we're, I told him.
He's Carmen Miranda. Or not Carmen Miranda, but Carmen San Diego.
Sorry. Where in the world?
On the bottom of page thirty. Thousand nine is our line.
There you go.
And now we're.
Sorry, on.
Section that looks close, but it's not the same. You can't.
On my document, I have uh a bunch of sections collapsed because I'm not quite ready to talk about them. So that's, that's why it looks like that. Yeah. Yes. Mm-hmm, we did. Yeah, so so when it comes to the lighting, we did exclude agricultural buildings. Even though um, one of the things that we do have in here is if it is a a light source that is attached to a timer and it's set to turn off. Um, uh, frequency no longer than two minutes after its next function. It's exempt from most of these requirements. You don't need, I think we say you still have to shield, but your color doesn't involve it. It's still turn off by itself. Um, there was one person who uh, from the Ogden Valley who came up in a hearing and said. We got cougars and I need to have a light because I don't want to go into my barn in a dark barn and I just have to find a cougar for after I turn the lights on. So if you had motion detect. Different kind of cougar.
We don't want to, we don't want to walk into our barn and find them either.
Light, light the place up.
I don't think we can talk that way.
So Charlie, uh, uh, on the older existing ag zones. Are these going to supersede? What's what's in place now? Because I have a neighbor. We we had a robbery and it really wasn't a robbery because the guy never locked his building. So somebody walked in, took some stuff. Well, he texted everybody in the neighborhood. Great. Everybody got up in arms. Until, at least for me, until I found out that he's, you know, that he left the building unlocked. So at that point, it was like, well, why do you put a sign there too that my building is unlocked and, you know, help yourself? But anyway, so a lot of the neighbors went and put on, you know, these big LED lights that seriously. Two houses up and on the other side of the street, it light is where the light is and it lights up my backyard. And it reflects off of the stuff in my backyard. And so seriously, my backyard is is lit now. And so I, you know, I'm I'm kind of wondering about this going forward.
So yes, it it will apply, but not immediate. There's an amortization schedule. Um, and so basically, quick answer to your question. Um, at the point that they have to replace that lighting device, they have to replace it with one that complies. Now, how are we gonna know? Well, you're gonna know because it's gonna be a different lighting device, hopefully better or worse than your call or enforcement office. But um, otherwise, we're just gonna catch the ones that we catch uh and the rest of them are allowed to stay until they're replaced. Um, otherwise, otherwise beyond that, uh, residential is not regulated by this. It's just. New residential is regulated, old residential is only regulated when you replace a light or you do upgrades to the exterior sort of material. Or site improvements uh greater than a certain amount and that's listed here. Okay, so just rewriting a little bit for clarity and consistency, we had. It went so many different rounds with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission that you get little sentences in there to. Uh, help a planning commissioner or county commissioner feel good about it that really don't mean anything. Um, but it helped them feel good. And so uh, for example, lighting for residential uses. That doesn't need to be stated because it's clearly stated in the code itself, um, elsewhere, so. Okay, so general standards. We just want to make it stupid simple to determine whether or not someone's income, right? Is it shielded? So shielding and direction. Um, which shielding direction includes no upward light, it includes location, angle and height. And you can have a fully shielded light that looks like this, that you can still see the light bulb on. I've got a light that looks a lot like this one right here over my garage. And when I put a standard light bulb in there, you can't see the bulb, but then when I put a flood lab light in there, my LED floodlight that changes colors for for uh Christmas time. You can see the bottom of it. I think I had uh, I had Rick and and Steve, we were going somewhere. We had a stop at my house to grab my sunglasses or something. I got back in the car and Steve said. Nice lighting devices. I don't think that's dark sky compliant. Cause I bragged a little bit when we were doing this, that all of my lighting devices were compliant until I changed the bulb. That's exactly right. Um, location angle and height. So I mean, these images are supposed to tell you that. First off, this is what shielded and unshielded is, only illuminating the area intended to be illuminated. So. For example, if your neighbor puts in a big floodlight and it goes on your property, but you are okay with it, that's not like trespass. But if it goes on your property and you're not okay with it, that is, so um, if you would like their light to illuminate your property, then so be it. Yeah, that's right. Uh, unshielded versus shielded, every lighting type, every lighting device type has. A corresponding dark sky compliant one. So and they're not hard to find. Now, uh, Home Depot, they've got a small IDA, International Dark Sky Association certified lighting, uh, outdoor lighting section, so it's not huge. You gotta order, if you're looking for a wider variety, you gotta get online to. Um, but they're out there and they're not significantly more expensive.
It's really the style that's out there now anyways, you know, that everybody's wanting to have.
That's right. In fact, I uh, that that fog that came in, what, a couple of weekends ago? Uh, where I was up in North Ogden and if you ever drive down Washington in the fog with North Ogden street lights. Uh, as long as you're at the right angle, it's beautiful because you see, you can clearly see. This image right here coming from each light as you're driving down, but you don't actually see the light. So the intention is see what's being illuminated, not see the light. Okay. Uh, just some more images to kind of show um how to be, you know, this is trespass, this is full cutoff. Uh, and it's full cutoff with a fence. Uh, just for the clarifying, how that works here. Um, street lighting, for example, um. UDOT coming up highway eighty-nine. I actually don't know if it exists after the construction, but if you if you're getting off of I fifteen, getting onto eighty-nine, you start coming up the hill. In Farmington, there is that side road and a pedestrian overpass that you go under. And there are really big tall lights right there and uh, somebody complained, I know they can. Because UDOT doesn't usually put on the shields unless somebody asks for it, but they what they've got probably drop drop shields about this big. That ensure the light isn't going across the street in residential properties, but I wish Ogden City would do. Okay, shielding material, she shielding mechanism, that's where we say it could be. By anything, your architecture, your landscape. by anything, your architecture, your landscape, big, a big wall, you can have a, a berm, a whole bunch of different things could shield your. You could have completely unshielded light except for under a canopy, behind a big berm, nobody else can see it, you know? Even someone flying over would be able to see it directly. Light color, here's your light Kelvin, three thousand and lower. Twenty-seven hundred is preferred by the International Dark Sky Association, but I had a hard time going lower than three thousand. Cause when you're looking at lighting devices, the easy to order lighting devices, uh, the back of the package will tell you what the color is. And it's kind of hard to find it below than three thousand now. So just stick with three thousand. What's that? That's right. That's right. Um. It is. And that's, so that's one of the reasons why it's hard to find anything less than three thousand. Cause LED under that is, is challenging. Yep. So I've got. What's that? Three thousand or lower. Yep. So three thousand isn't terribly hard to find. Um, but that's kind of the lower limit of what those LED, the white LED lights are, are coming out with. Now they're getting better. And so you get a little more, a little bit more natural types of light with different colors, but it's still. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I've got those in my kitchen where, uh, on the back of it, you just switch between, I think it was five thousand, four thousand or three thousand. Choose the color. Okay. So we've got general standards and we've got specific standards. So we just got through the general standards and here we have specifics. So talk about a light curfew, turn the light off after end of business or ten o'clock, whichever is later. So primarily applicable to commercial. Uh, but in some cases, uh, residential, uh, for new residential. So no flashing or flickering, um, your canopy lighting, this is your gas station, this is your bank, the canopy that goes over where your queues are. Your direct artificial light sources need to be shielded recessed so that you can't see them from the street or off property. And have no more than a lumen output of, what do we say here? Eight lumens per square foot of canopy area. Uh, just to give you an example, the standard Maverick, uh, light that goes under their canopy, one of those is seventeen thousand lumens. And so if you look at the one that's right down here on Washington, I think they've got either eight or twelve lumens. So you do that math and then you check out how many square feet that canopy is. That is a very, that's a lot of light. And I talked to, um, the owners, uh, or, uh, some of the higher ups at Maverick, uh, about this. And they said, we're not too worried about the lighting code. We just, we need to be brighter than the guy across the street. Uh, as long as we've got. Well, safety is a little bit of an excuse, but it's actually not coming from the lighting guys at Maverick. Uh, the lighting, uh, engineers over at Maverick, there's not a whole lot of, uh, evidence that ties safety to light level. There is a lot of evidence that ties safety to, um, the dispersment of light. And so, uh, the, the ratio is one to four. So if you have a greater amount of hot spots, uh, four times greater than your, or greater than four times more than your dark spots, then you start getting to a safety factor. And it's really about how quickly your eyes can dilate and, and, and construct. Um, honestly, when you get into a dark sky, uh, neighborhood and your eyes are nice wide and open, and then you get oncoming traffic and that blinds you, uh, right? And you think about how many times you've been driven through rural areas where there are no lights or. Car comes, it just feels like it's a lot brighter than driving down Washington where you got ten cars heading your way. Um, so the idea is, and this is, we didn't write it into the code because this, I think this will be market driven, is make sure you have enough lighting devices at a low enough level to provide no more than. Difference, dark spot. A scary thing when you're pumping gases, pumping gas where you're in a spotlight, everything outside of that is dark. But you keep the light low enough and consistently spread it, then you, you can see what's happening. So, and that's the intention. Under the canopy, it's eight lumens per square foot. Uh, if you get into the parking lot area, it's two lumens per square foot. So fairly dark. What this need, what this requires, so you can see hotspots, uh, hotspots and dark spots in a parking lot. Um, but this is generally speaking, I think about a one to four, uh, ratio. What this is going to require, if you're turning the lights way down, is more lights, more lighting devices. Just turn down lower. So you've got a more consistent. Um, in the current code, I have all these graphics at the very end in a, in a list of exhibits. I just pulled them out of that and sorry, I put them into, or straight into the codes that are easier to use your foot back and forth. Recreation facility lighting. So let's see. Okay. Still under specific standard. So recreation facility lighting, um, this one's an interesting one. I'm just gonna read it to you because it's about bits since I read it. Um, shall comply with the following. So lighting of the recreational activity area shall only be directed onto the area where the recreation activities are occurring. It shall not be allowed to illuminate surfaces that are not essential to the function of the recreation activity. That's one. Two, lighting shall not exceed a ratio of ten lumens per square foot of recreational activity area. This ratio shall be calculated to combine the total lumen output of each artificial light source divided by the square footage of the recreation activity area. See section one oh eight sixteen fifteen for a graphic depiction that needs to change. Okay. And the light color does not apply. So the, you could be brighter than the three thousand Kelvin. So, um, we did the math, we checked out the science, did a lot of research when we created this ordinance. And, um, the ten lumens per square foot, that is what the sun produces. Uh, on a clear day. And so that's quite bright. Uh, if you ever drive up thirtieth street while, uh, Ogden, uh, high and has their fields illuminated, it is blank. Um, it is way too bright. And I, here's a graphic image. Now, this has not been doctored. Uh, now maybe it was doctored by whoever the original photographer was, but this was not an image intended to show night sky lighting. It was just a great example of what we're talking about here. Those lights are shielded and they're directed very specifically. You look up in these can, uh, these, uh, these bundle of lights, you got a whole host of lights up there. But they're all pointed in the right area that it needs to be pointed in to provide a consistent spread across that. Uh, and you don't see hotspots or dark spots. So I mean, that's, this is what lighting engineers do. They specialize in doing this and it's not hard to still provide. Like this is showing in the back, full cutoff. Where the light is not being spread. So when you're outside of, uh, uh, the fence in the back, you should not be able to see the light, the direct light coming out of those lighting devices. You might see some reflection coming out of the light sources, uh, or sorry, the, uh, shielding, but you shouldn't be able to see the bulbs.
I think UDOT should take some lessons from these guys.
I don't disagree. Okay. Um, sign lighting.
Makes sense for.
So we got a sign it, a sign code. Hopefully we can get to that today. Um, and lighting of a sign, uh, of signs are, uh, more specifically addressed in that code. Okay. Now we get into the exemptions. What does this not apply to? Now, even though there are exemptions, there are still standards written with those exemptions. We say, uh, you don't have to comply with the requirements of this ordinance as long as you do it this way. Um, agricultural light, so light for agricultural uses, not, not required to comply. Uh, federal and state flag lighting. Uh, it's not required to comply as long as the light is coming from the top of the light, which I don't know a whole lot of them around that do that, but I have seen it as possible. Um, and there are some specifics that, that go along with that. Um, federal and state facility lighting. Um, federal and state already pretty, pretty dense, most of our codes anyway. Fossil fuel lighting. So we're talking about tiki torches or, uh, natural gas, um, lighting devices. And you, like the, uh, lamp light constructed in San Diego. Get some really cool things out of that. And you don't have to comply here in those, those cases. You can see the direct flame. It's not.
Exactly. Your bond.
Um, holiday or festive lighting. This is an interesting one and we went round and round on this one, not really. I don't know that we ever came to a really good, uh, conclusion.
I can see why this is, may, maybe this is what your conversation was, but now everybody leaves them on year round and they change it per holiday or for whatever they're celebrating. So.
Yeah. So jelly lights is the big one that's going around right now. And those are permanently installed and technically not in compliance. Now, as long as it all downward and you can't see the bulb itself. And so as long as they've got shields, yeah, then you're good. Everliss. Yeah. So that's actually something that a, a member of the Ogden Valley Planning Commission brought up when we were going over this. If they've got a gable back porch and they've got candle lights, but their gable, their can lights are, are, are at a ninety to the gable back porch. And there's a drop off in the backyard down to the street. You're always gonna see that. That's not, that's not the case. You can design it so you're not seeing that light. You can downward direct that light. You can fold the light, lighting device further back into the shield. It's just a matter of doing a little bit more homework and finding the right lighting device for that situation. Or plant more trees or something that locks the light. But it's not easy in all cases, in all situations. So lighting devices, we just said, all right, as long as it's not permanently installed and you're, you take them down at least once a year. Are we gonna go with at least that? Probably not. But if you leave your lights on every day, all day, year round, we're probably gonna police that. As long as the neighbors. Yeah. Well, I, I thought about. Originally we thought, well, Christmas, well, no, cause Halloween, well, Valentine's Day, and they're not all federally recognized holidays. And what do you do for some of the religious holidays? So everybody has something to celebrate at some point in the year, your birthday. Great.
Well, there's that new, if you go to Wellsville, there's that new big house up on the, um, coming towards Sardine Canyon and it always has their jelly lights on. And it's like, it looks like a government building shining on the hill. Yeah.
Yeah. Look at me, we're here.
Look at, which is good for Andrew. He needs ideas so he can have a light more with his neighbor.
Yeah, but the one up above, the, the bigger house that's up above, it's not on.
Yeah, you can't.
Exactly.
Uh, they don't, they don't have anything to prove.
Yeah. Maybe that's why the one below it did it.
Uh, low outpour, low output light sources. So this is when you've got like string lights or bistro lights, just something that's illuminating a patio. So those are exempt as long as the ratio of light, um, is not greater than cumulative lumen output. Uh, where does he? A hundred and five lumens? Wait, no, sorry. Each light cannot be more than a hundred and five lumens with accumulative lumen output not to exceed a ratio of one and a half lumens per square foot of cumulative area. So you've got a bistro or you got, you know, your backyard patio or whatever, you got those little lights that use zigzag or whatever. Those are fine. Um, if you take them and you ball them up and you put them in one location, uh, and they become a very, very bright light, otherwise then they're not. So they've got to be spread out evenly distributed, uh, into the light. Hundred five lumens, just so you know, is seven watt in condensed. That's the kind of. Mobile light. I don't know why we have to say this, but we do. Um, if it's on a vehicle, it's fine. Even a tractor. Uh, we added in this, uh, I think two years ago, motion sensor controlled light source with an integrated camera system. So it's all right. The integrated camera systems, they function off of a very specific, uh, light wavelength. Um, and so there needs to be this specific light to provide that. So as long as it's on, uh, motion detectors, turns on, turns off, it's good. Safety and security. So this was a challenging one. And a lot of folks, uh, said, you know, what if it is a safety hazard and we need to have this? So we said, okay. Number one, if you cannot get insurance, you gotta provide proof that you are being rejected for insurance because of a lighting issue. In those cases, we can, we can, uh, change the story a little bit. Uh, but only as much as is necessary to retain your insurance. So no great. Or if you've got credible scientific evidence that shows that the level of light is absolutely necessary for your land use. Those cases, we can waive it as well. However, planning division needs to do a little bit of research because if there's credible evidence that argues to the opposite, you know, you could, you pay an expert to say something and they might say exactly what you want them to say. So we would just want to make sure that the, uh, ex, experts are being honest. Um, so. Okay. That's what that section says. Occasional event lighting for like a, a wedding, uh, or a social gathering. It's fine as long as this is not a reoccurring thing, uh, no more than twice a month. That's probably generous. Unless you have a wedding reception, uh, hall, I guess. Yeah. Then you, thank you. Unless your backyard is a wedding reception. Nope. Are, are they still being used?
That's what attracts people to those attractions.
Is, is that an agricultural light? All right. Exempt. And they are kind of fun. But he'll do it from inside. It's so that he's in compliance with the requirements.
They, they burn about fifty gallons of fuel every minute though.
It'd be worth it though.
Well, maybe.
Fire hazard. Um, by the way, not married to any of these requirements applying our laws. So if there's things that you want to back off on, we can say in Western Weaver, these are the special rules in Ogden Valley, these are the special rules. Underwater lighting, so underwater lighting and swimming pool is exempt as long as it's not intended to illuminate features, uh, above the water. So spotlights that go up onto a fountain, that wouldn't be allowed to go down like your fountains. Makes sense? I saw. Could very well do that. Yeah, it doesn't have the same benefit of traveling through the water. That's true. Well.
Well, there are some fountain. For to come out of the same general.
That's right.
So that the water looks like it's illuminated as it's traveling.
I, I, I have one. I have one of those in my pond in the backyard. So I'm guilty. Um, but, uh, having a light that's on a fence or a light pole or something that directly shines down on it, it doesn't give you the light travel that having it coming from inside the water gives you. It still lies a little. It's kind of like your flag light, your, your flag being a little near the top. Well, somehow having a lighting device that's above the water. Makes sense.
Sometimes somebody's near you, that's a neighbor that hates you, right?
Yep. Okay. Uh, temporary public agency lighting, if the county or UDOT needs to do something, they install some lights since allowed, uh, as long as it's not permanent. Um, and then, uh, tower lighting. So anything required by the FAA. However, the minimum required by the FAA is the maximum allowed by us. Okay. Procedure for compliance applications, that's not significantly different than what we already do. Um, when you submit for your building permit, when you submit for your, uh, design review, um, that's when we look at lighting and you gotta submit your cut sheets to show what your lighting devices are. We allow in some six, uh, circum, circumstances for you to get through the design, uh, review process or the building permit process. But you can't get to final, uh, until you've submitted those questions. Some people don't know what kind of lights they want at the point that they're getting to vote. Okay. Required replacement of non-conforming outdoor lighting. So this is where, uh, what do we do with ones that already exist? Okay. After the effect of this chapter, which is August first, two thousand seventeen in the Ogden Valley. And I said, January first, twenty twenty-three, but I can change that number now. Um, in Western Weaver planning area, all existing outdoor lighting that does not comply with the requirements of this chapter shall be considered non-conforming lighting. Outdoor light. All non-conforming outdoor lighting shall be phased out over time as follows. A lighting conversion for single and two family dwelling, uh, oh, sorry, lighting conversion with a single, single and two family dwelling exception. Except for our lighting for. Except for outdoor lighting for a single or two-family dwelling in existence or approved on or before that date. And except for exemptions provided herein, any non-conforming artificial light source shall be terminated, replaced, or retrofitted to conform with the requirements of this chapter within ten years. So we had a, we have an expiration unless you are single family residential or two-family residential. All of your non-conforming lights have to be replaced with. That number was tossed around. We did five, we did seven. At the end of the day, the commissioner said, let's get plenty of time. Let's just take them. Okay, lighting replacement, the replacement of any non-conforming outdoor artificial light, this, there is no exemption for residential on this one. So the replacement of any non-conforming outdoor artificial light source shall comply with the requirements of this chapter. Building exterior modification, so. Anytime you change twenty-five percent of a building facade, you need to update the lights on that facade, even if it's on a side of the facade that you're not changing. Um, and then building expansion, anytime you grow your building more than, I think we said twenty-five percent. Yep, twenty-five percent of the total area.
What's that? So it's twenty-five feet, not percent.
Sorry, looking at number one. So the threshold, so go down, yeah, twenty-five percent of the total area of the building as it existed. Well, uh, when this was adopted. Or two thousand five hundred square feet. If you're over that amount, you've got to replace your lights within twenty-five feet of the property. Sorry, within twenty-five feet of the building, replace that. And then site improvements, something similar. If you're doing anything to change your site more than twenty-five percent or twenty thousand square feet, you've gotta update all the lights on the property. Okay. Violations really uh goes to the same standard uh that uh every other violation goes through. Um, and then. Enforcement, uh, creation of dark sky committee. We still haven't created a dark sky committee. Um, there isn't commission support right now to create one. Um, the code says only in the Ogden Valley. Um, my suggestion is that you don't have one and you let the code enforcement officers do their job. As opposed to having a citizen deputized committee that really wants to drive.
Dark sky.
We'll get, we'll give you badges.
Do they get to carry lightsaber?
It's the weapon. It's actually slingshots. Take care of the.
Seabards are not dark sky compliant, just saying.
Right. They are if you strap them to your car, right? Okay, um, all of these are just examples of lights, but we uh put all the images uh above embedded in the text, so. Okay, pathways. I have not changed any part of this section, but I have it here to show you guys that this is something we're gonna address. And really what I intend to do is just grab what we have in the cluster subdivision code and make it generally applicable and also. Basically, you need to have pathway that runs in um at least three opposing directions, leaving your subdivision. Um, that, that intersects with another pathway or street, once every at least five hundred feet, we're probably gonna wanna adjust that standard to smaller for a smaller lot. Um, so it's. The Ogden Valley Pathways Ordinance is not great. Uh, so don't get into it too much and don't get invested. Uh, we're gonna write something that can actually be used and enforced.
Pathways driving notes. We put all this money into them, like you look at twenty-five fifty, beautiful sidewalk, although, you know, a long ways up it. And every runner and walker and everybody else is on the road. We put all this money into something that nobody will use, you know?
An interesting thing, if you put a pathway.
You do, but.
You put a ten-foot wide pathway, they'll be on. I don't know necessarily difference. I mean, maybe it's just.
Thanks.
Sense of, of width of a sidewalk. Some of those sidewalks are only four feet, but.
An extra ten bucks for shoes and.
That's interesting.
But even single people like. This morning, actually, I'm like, ah, it's just so annoying. Sorry.
So you guys recall seeing the graphic of the pathway cross-section, the thirty-foot wide, if you're running between lots, the um, the cross-section of it, if it's on a street. Those graphics will be plugged right into the code here. And it does call for asphalt as long as it's got a concrete ribbon on both sides. So hopefully we get those folks who wanna run on asphalt, running on asphalt. Okay. I'll redraw the drawings so we can actually tell what the drawings are cuz this is as clear as it gets, even if you look on the online code. Sweet. You can tell how. Uh, this is a, a intersection. Oh. Oh, sorry, those are signs, yeah. They're probably supposed to be signs. Yeah, I, I think these are trees, the little squiggly lines.
I would just be very careful with trees. I love them for the shade, but because we have shallow root systems, they usually end up taking out the asphalt and the sidewalks.
Yeah, big concern that our engineers have as well. And so we need to, there are tree species, we just need to find the correct tree species.
That the roots go down instead of out.
And we need, we need to find a tree species that also doesn't have broad leaf, they've got small leaf. And so we're narrowing ourselves down if we're looking for something that's native to the state of Utah, uh, and what kind of tree species we need, but.
No trees are native to you.
Yeah. Okay, um. Okay. So this is the sign code. I am deleting the Western Weaver sign code. I hope you guys are okay with that. And then we're adding in, we're using the Ogden Valley sign code and making it applicable across the board. There's been vetted a little bit better. They got a few more commercial uses going on out there. Um, and the Western Weaver sign code is.
Keep talking like they're better than us.
Oh, I'm not. They've just worked on this stuff cuz they've had more development. Cuz they save it.
Trevor's not better than us.
Okay. So let's run through this. This really, I'm gonna let you study it in your own time, uh, as opposed to go through it in detail. Um, you're gonna see a lot of blue line and red line. I'm more reorganizing so it flows better. I'm actually looking at some of the stuff that I wrote from eight years ago going, oh, that's not great, let's try that again. So, um, and we're cutting out a ton of redundancy, so. Applicability, um, ironically, uh, flags are a big deal when you get in more urbanized areas. Um, and so there's some flag standards in there. Uh, allowing for a master sign plan, okay, non-conforming signs, just saying, they need to be phased out over time, they are allowed to exist, you can maintain them. Um, but in time, they need to be replaced. Okay, allowable sign types in the Ogden Valley uh ordinance, it has. Uh, for commercial uses, it has, or sorry, non-residential uses, there's wall signs, ground signs, entrance and exit signs and window signs. Just spread throughout. And so I just grab them all and put them all in one spot, easy to grab. Uh, they also spread it out amongst various zones, but every single one of them say the same thing. So I just put it all in at once. And then other sign types. Uh, manual change copy, okay, then you got residential signs, so these are non-commercial areas, just residential zones that are primarily residential. Uh, just lending to wall signs. That would means that daycare would still be limited like this if it's in that residential area. To, to a walls. Okay, signs in all zones, so these signs are allowed in all zones, um, as long as they comply with, with what's listed in there. Conservation property sign, um, this is really what we're talking about. This is actually a new sign type that we added in. Um, uh, folks who, the Ogden Valley Land Trust have conservation easements and they wanted to memorialize these things with a sign and we just didn't have a sign type. We created that for them. And it could be either a freestanding pole sign, pole sign has to have two poles according to our own ordinance, so no single pole, um, no popsicle stick signs, basically. Uh, a gateway or an arch, so some minimum standards, just to make sure the fire truck can get underneath it if it does exist. And these are more on driveways, not on uh, uh, public streets. Uh, neighborhood entry signs, so uh you can have a big sign that says you have arrived to this neighborhood. There are some limitations on what we can do with signs. Um, we can regulate commercial speech, we cannot re- regulate the content of a sign if it's non-commercial speech. And so neighborhood sign, well, how do you know it's neighborhood sign? Because it's located at the front of the neighborhood, not because of what it says. Um, it could say. Planning commissioners are. We don't know that cuz it's at the front of the neighborhood sign.
Everybody knows that.
We can't, we can't read it.
We, we have some interesting ones in our neighborhood, huh, Brandon? Yeah. On people's windows, window signs, residential window signs.
We do have regulations.
My kid was very educated on language. Politics.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's like that.
Well, so speaking of uh political signs, flags play in uh really hard on, on this front. So uh, this sign code, the Ogden Valley said, only flags that we're comfortable with is the state flag, the flag of the United States. And I think there was one more American flag or something like that. Um, limited to that. Now, how do you know? That it's one of those flags cuz you can't interpret it, otherwise that's free speech. It's just black. So we just, we say your flag needs to be flown this way, uh, at this angle, um, and so forth. So that's, that's kind of how we address that. Makes sense?
You're saying they can still have whatever flag, right? Like if there was a pride flag, for example, how do you tell somebody without having a lawsuit and they can't fly a pride flag, right? Well, our neighbor that has the.
Right.
Forget you Biden, we'll say.
Yeah.
Sign.
Let's go.
Or flag. Yeah, he, he's more. More straightforward.
Stolen.
Yeah.
And, and you've seen his, you've seen his thing there about how, if you're driving this and this and that, and yeah.
One of my kids sees on the bus and he's like, hey, dad, what does this mean? Like, well.
Yeah, let me make sure, yep, okay. Make sure I got that right. So uh, these are the standards for flying a flag. Um, shall be mounted on a roof, uh, atop, sorry, shall not be mounted on a roof atop any sign or higher than the maximum building height allowed in the zone. Um, shall be a rectangle mounted or affixed on only one edge to support the angles no less than forty-five degree above the horizon. Uh, so if you got it on your front porch and you're hanging it out this way, no less than forty-five, unless it's a half, that's it. At the ninety, which is the much part here, except during governmental sponsor, half staff period at which time the fixed edges, uh, edge may be uh at the full horizontal. Length of the edge of the flag is mounted or affixed, uh, that is mounted or affixed shall be less than or equal to the length of an adjacent edge. And shall be mounted or fixed in a manner so that it hangs or drapes when element is present. And the area of the flag in square feet shall be no greater than one point five times the linear feet of the flag height as the top of the flagged finished ground directly. Now, uh, looking at this kind of stuff, you're like, oh, it's a. Lot for a little flag. Um, but think about uh the flags that Macy's like to fly. Uh, now it is a United States flag, and so that's great community pride, but if they hung a let's go Brandon sign, that, that is that size in that parking lot, I think we'd be really quick to. Uh, create some regulation. So we're not regulating content or type of flag, but we are. Right, so we're just saying, uh, hang your flag. But it's gotta be hung in this there, yeah. And we.
Class it up, people, come on.
That's right. This really is the, the one point five times the uh, uh, the affixed edge that those are the dimensions of the US flag. And the state flag follows that as well. So just trying to tailor it to the US flag while providing objective standards to measure it by. Now hopefully, none of us have to go actually measure somebody's flag to determine whether.
Oh, I hope you have to. I'm gonna find somebody.
Jimmy up that flag. Okay. Um, well signed, so window signs, um, pretty strict on window signs. Um, one of the. One of the challenges in some of the less attractive commercial areas is all the windows and things. And the, just the various different ways that they're printed, Kong and all that. That's right, that's right, so. And, and addressing. Addressing free speech. Now, our attorneys say that we can regulate, regulate it if it's commercial speech, but just trying to address free, free speech. Um, window sign, we don't say open or closed sign, we say window sign. And you can have a window sign that looks like this, and then we design a sign that looks like an open and closed sign. But if that says beer, it says beer. And it's not a whole lot we can or, or should do about it. Okay. We're just limiting essentially um how much of the window it can occupy. Manual change copy signs, that's the one that just got the magnet to pull the ones off. Get really funny, they make really funny memes. I don't know, they might be out there. Um, just one right around the corner from my house. Anyway. Not a whole lot of them, but manual change copy, so important thing is automatic change copy, which is digital sign, not a. And that's really related to the light, uh, that's produced by digits. So, um, residential, okay, property signings. So I'm flying through and skipping over more than I should, okay. Signs that are exempt, so these are signs allowed in all zones and they're exempt from having to comply with the um, display. And in some cases, building material standards, so a couple of sections below, we've got display requirements and uh building material. So address numbers doesn't make a lot of sense to put a lot of limitations on that. Um, athletic field scoreboard signs, you could actually have a digital sign in that case, so you don't have to do the change copy uh with those. Um, business signs, uh, so open and closed vacancy, no vacancy, we're getting into some speech here. But again, that is, this is commercial, so uh when it comes to business signs, we can get into the speech a little bit. Uh, grand opening signs, guidance signs, historical signs, murals, nameplate signs, uh, portable signs, the Ogden Valley, this is a big deal. You find this in your, uh, your small little commercial boutique areas where everybody wants to put a sandwich sign out next to the road, but there's nowhere to put it.
What about the going out of business sign? You have a grand opening, but there are some businesses that have been going out of business for twenty years, so.
They go out of business.
Those to only one closing. Before they have another closing.
Yeah, examples, furniture stores, well.
Called the, the, a grand closing sign.
Yeah, they might need you in Ogden Valley.
Okay, so some sandwich signs. Now, what we're saying is if you're gonna do sandwich signs, if we're gonna allow sandwich signs, they've gotta have some kind of consistent design. No more than nine square feet of uh surface, which is kind of big. Uh, the sandwich signs that you normally see is like two feet by. Uh, well, the sign face itself is two feet by three feet, these are a little bit bigger than that. Saying they need to be black with white lettering. Uh, maybe have. A wood frame. I don't know if that's anything you guys wanna try and bite off, leave it as it is since it's already adopted, but. Okay, private warning signs, uh, so caution, dot, and break, it's just. Uh, signs on vehicles. Uh, statuary and sculptures and traffic signs, these are all the exhibits. This is all redundant language. Just taking old se- uh, other sections, just reserving them, okay, prohibited signs, let's talk about those, moving signs. Any kind of animated sign, moving sign, undulating something, um, any sign that has mechanical devices attached to it that spin or move or wave, it's the um. It's that called, uh, Los Ramados in uh Salt Lake, uh, back when they had the business on, um. Oh, shoot, I can't remember the name of that road, but they had just three Mexican guys going back and forth like this. You know, I think Pep Boys had that too, uh, for a little while, so, yeah, no, nothing like. That was the only reason they were getting customers. Rotating beacon line. Rotating beacon lights. There's that beacon. So I actually took it out from here and I just, that, that is part of moving. Inflatable advertising devices or signs is the wavy guy. Now, I did delete does not refer to hot air balloons. I don't think we need to say that. Those are not permanently affixed to the ground. Very much so. Okay, let's see. Flags that are not exempt by one oh, one ten two two. So. Triangular flags, the string of, of triangular flags on the car lot to say that, you know, you're having a sale. Banners unless otherwise allowed by grand opening or now grand closing. Change copy. So electronic change copy not allowed. No, and we actually tried to address that because there was a landowner in the Ogden Valley that wanted to upgrade his change copy sign with electronic sign. To do messaging like that and he was willing to do rotating message every so. Yeah, interval. So if you guys want to make that allowance, that's fine. We have to address the lighting. That would be allowed to come off of that sign because we need to. We would need to put in there like a photometric requirement for a sensor to be in there as ambient light levels reduce the sign. Get really bright signs. So a little bit of light coming. Okay, let's.
We want to be modern, right?
Please use your microphones, otherwise it won't pick up on the recording.
So, no, that's, that's exactly right. None of these need to apply. So just looking back to what your general plan says, does talk about dark skylighting and we've already got something written. Now we can reinvent the wheel.
I, I like the idea and the concepts of dark sky lighting and, you know, limiting it, but I think that we. We can have a little bit more exceptions than what Ogden Valley has.
So.
Personally, that's.
We're almost down to the end of prohibited signs. When we get to the end of prohibited signs, let's kind of go over and recap and just. Get your ideas on what we, what you may want to expand allowances for. So we've got luminous tube signs. So the neon signs that Ogden likes so, like so much. Not allowed. Other temporary signs. So we have a section that allows certain types of temporary signs, otherwise not allowed. Roof signs, billboards, hall signs and public property signs.
Charlie, it's like, was there reasoning for number eight? Tube signs, is that just because of looks or because of? That they're filled with gas or do you know what that would?
It, it's a direct artificial light source. And so it's essentially about the light source. So. They're not typically really bright, but they can be made really bright. So.
Are they still common? I mean, because.
Downtown Twenty-Fifth Street, they're really trying to bring back the neon.
But yeah, but that's because it's historic, right? And it's kind of that antique, which I honestly like, but.
Twenty-Fifth Street.
See, I don't know, some antique dealer or something out west wanting to match that or making it, you know, the village area trying to. Make it look like something that was old.
It kind of depends on the style of form-based village that you want. I mean, right now we're kind of looking at the agrarian style, but if you wanted a different style.
I guess that's the idea is the agrarian style. Does the, the dark sky fit with the agrarian style? And do we want to disrupt that with commercial or do we want to keep it consistent with the agrarian?
Brent has a huge Coors Light. Neon light on his barn and I think it looks nice. Doesn't it say ladies eat free on Wednesdays too?
Most Wednesdays. Well, I've changed it tonight because she knew I was going to be home. The word most flickers a little.
So, yeah.
It's one of those conditional use things maybe or something. It's just. There's times when it could be appropriate, but.
I, I'd rather have language here and then, and then we work with it as we get. Exceptions or applications.
You're gonna get complaints.
Exactly. So I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather have something than nothing and I'd rather work with it as it, as it hits us because. Right now it's not an issue. Someday it will be. And, and maybe, you know, who knows how far away that is, but that. For me, having no, barely any experience with this kind of, of, you know, lighting at all, I just assume kind of look at it as it comes. But I do want, I, I do think it's. It behooves us to have something in place.
Okay. Other loud signs, yada, yada, yada. That's all going away. Temporary, okay, sign materials and display standards. So here's where we, in the Ogden Valley, they've limited the kind of sign material. So materials used to construct signs. Supports fasteners should conform to the following standards. Signs may be constructed of painted stain, sandblasted or carved wood, brick, stone, textured concrete or similar material. Glass, metal or metallic leaf, which is painted anodized or otherwise treated to prevent reflective glare may also be used copper brass rod iron. And the other metals may remain untreated, allowed to develop natural patina. And then structures. Sorry, structures may be constructed, painted stained, sandblasted, carved. Wood, brick, stone, textured concrete or similar material, glass, metal or metallic leaf, which is painted anodized or otherwise treated. To prevent reflective glare may also be used copper brass, wrought iron and other. Metals may remain untreated and allow to develop a natural, you know, support structure shall use natural muted earth tones, colors. Including browns, blacks, grays, rust, et cetera. White shall not be used as a predominant color. That may be used as. Somebody doesn't like. Where are your thoughts?
I don't like the white part, honestly. But that's coming from somebody whose house and whole barn is white. So. I'm biased and I know that they wouldn't like that in Ogden Valley, right? The, the white look, but I don't, I don't like. I don't want everything being red either. Not that I don't like red, I just don't want.
But a, a white barn with a green roof is kind of classic dairy barn.
That's in Ogden Valley.
It's in there. It's the main thing that everybody recognizes.
The white barn. So I suspect the existing Ogden Valley Planning Commission is not going to care about white either. And they're, they'll be reviewing. Okay. Display standards, so. No obstruction in the clear view and the, or from traffic along the street right of way. No projection within the right of way, except as specifically provided. So. In your downtown areas where you've got a zero setback, you've got blade signs coming out from the wall, you're going to need some projection there. And that's listed in form-based village. Illumination, an illuminated sign as defined in. Section shall comply with the requirements this chapter and the following provisions. So. Downward directed, still just copying over from the like code, downward directed, light trespass, light level, photometric plans. May be required. So in the other chapter, we don't say photometric plans are always required unless it is a commercial use. Then we require them, or sorry, it gives the planning director the authority to require them. If it doesn't look like they're meeting the minimum requirements of the code. So same here. And then directional or circulation signs that are not visible offsite. This actually gives a little bit of a card now. So. Directional or circulation signs that are not visible from any point outside of the property boundary are not subject to the elimination requirements of the section. It's not bothering anyone. You can't see it from outside.
Bring your signs, fine.
We actually added this in because we got into a situation where we had a bank that wanted to do the green open, red closed. And wanted to alter it on that. And it isn't in compliance with the lighting colors, the light. And so we said, all right, as long as you can't see it in the neighbor's property, it really does not matter because it's under the. So wall signs mounted on parapets, imitation traffic signs are not allowed, no prevention of ingress or egress. So you can't put them somewhere where someone else is trying to get. Access to a property or door, window, fire escape, et cetera. Can't put them on a natural feature. Rocks. Et cetera. Landscaping, so spells out a little bit about landscaping. The planning commission may exempt some ground or monument signs from the standard. Street frontage. So when a freestanding building complex or storefront does not face a public street or group private road and is access. Access via pedestrian area or common parking drive area. Linear footage of the building or storefront facing the pedestrian area or area shall substitute for purposes of. Determining allowable signage. So basically we're saying, look, if you've got a flag. A lot that's a, leads to a commercial development, you can put your sign right there at the. At the flag stand, even though some, some, some of the signs area is limited by how much frontage you have. And so it allows you to substitute that out. So you can still use the law. Dangerous or defective signs, I really don't think we need to say this because the building official already has the authority to require them to come down, but it's in the code. And then construction standards, okay. Just build it nice so it stands up. Now, we're not requiring in all cases them to be engineered. But if the county engineer. Feels like an engineer hasn't been engineered well enough, they can require something from certified engineer. All right. So let's talk a little bit about what all that means, especially when we're talking about. So. We show here. Reverse. So you got channelized lettering with the sign, with the lighting tube or device or whatever it is on the inside. And it's creating a little amount. Everything is fine with this except for the color. Isn't three thousand Kelvin of this. Barneys, they use the reverse halo and the semi-transparent. Plastic. So everything is okay with this except for the semi-transparent plastic. Everything on this sign is fine. They've got downward directed, fully shielded, linear. Light of some sort that's three thousand Kelvin on this. I think most of what we're going to see and the easiest way to comply with these is just downward directed goose necks. Which goes really well with that. We've got a whole bunch of stuff in the supplemental requirements. Feel free to browse through all of that at your leisure. I'll have to come back at another time. It's the end of what I have here. Yep. Do you, sorry, that's the stuff that we skipped in the supplemental chapter. Okay. One oh eight. Dash seven. Yep. And most of what you'll see that I'm doing in there that's not done yet is. Somebody create a whole bunch of standards and rather than organizing them in the code, they just bombarded it all over the place. It's just random. And I have read things in there that I didn't know was even a regulation in Weaver County and I've been here for. Almost ten years. So I am reorganizing. You'll see I've got building site development standards. I've got. Energy generation, utility. I mean, there's just, just try and go down the list and. Throw things in the appropriate sections. We still may have a miscellaneous section, but.
But you, you've removed most of this stuff and put it where you feel like it.
I've started, started rearranging. Yep. Now, I, I can't say I've done it to all, but. You, you'll, you'll get the gist of it after starting from the top of one oh eight dash seven and moving down. Okay, so a couple of last questions. When it comes to getting things taken care of with the general plan and allowing the smaller lot sizes. What did we miss? Did we miss anything that you guys think need to be taken, needs to be taken care of right away? I know lighting and signage may not be directly related to that. It was already written, so it's not hard to do. I figure let's get it moving quick. What else?
One concern I had is sometimes we've required the exchange and I, I can't remember the name of the exchange where. Yeah, transfer of building rights in addition to the parks fee and sometimes we're not requiring that transfer. And I, I think it's important that we do that transfer. So we stick with what the residents out there wanted as far as density goes. But you guys are the ones out there. So it's so verbiage to make sure that that's more required and expected, I think would be good.
So there, there wasn't an intention to, there was not an intention to include transferable development rights to go to the third acre. But there is to go to anything smaller than.
Than the third acre.
So yeah, so if you, if you pull out your form base packet. Next to the last page, I think, is where the transferable development rights section applicable to Western Weaver is.
So it's everything beyond the third acre, but even we haven't discussed that with all the applicants coming in, they're going smaller than a third. So.
So the third acre.
The base is the third, not the. For the buying more transferable.
The base density. So even though each lot might be smaller, the base density of the gross area.
I see what you're saying. Okay. Except for the discussion we had where we did talk about the transfer. With the, the last applicant.
Okay, and that's form base oriented.
So is there a process for TDRs written somewhere?
Yep. And that's what we were just talking about. So if you pull out the form-based village.
Okay, at the end of that.
Yep, at the end of that, you can see what that is. Yeah. And for the Ogden Valley, the big deal for that one is I started with the number I said each probably is incentivized or transfers. One to three. So if you transfer one building right off of the farmer's property, you can put three on yours. That was just a starting point. You guys tell me. I also did not, for your base density, I didn't say your base density is automatically times three. It's whatever it is in the A1 zone or A2 zone, whatever you're located in. And if you want more than that. You've got to do it at a transfer ratio. So that could have. More discussion as well because I know Brad Blanch would have loved to see his. One unit to the acre turned into three units to the acre and then transfer them to his five acre. As opposed to needing to go out to get anything.
So how are those recorded on the property that's the, that's the giver, if you will?
So there is, see how quickly I can pull this up. So we're.
And they're permanent, right? I mean, they're, once they're transferred, that's it.
They run with the land. Now, nothing is ever, that's it, right? Yeah, your property could be rezoned for higher density and now you've got more, more rights. So. Transfers are only super helpful so long as you're not just giving more density. All over the place. That's why I think it's going to work in the village or the commercial type areas. I, I don't know if it's going to work as well in the residential areas. Just because we're already saying you get three times your amount of density, otherwise. Oh shoot.
Don't worry about it, Charlie.
I'll, I'll have it ready for our next conversation, but basically it's a covenant runs with the land. The, the sending parcel has a covenant that says, we agree. That we, with this parcel number, we have this amount of base density based on your cap, your base density calculation in your code at the time that we did this. So if we change that calculation in the future, the, the calculation on that document changes. We are sending one unit to that parcel. So it's a full ledger accounting for where it is, where the land. Uh, so it's a full ledger accounting for where it is, where it went and how much the parcel had before you sent. And how much the parcel had after, and then on the other property, we have another covenant, the sister covenant says, we received this from that property. So we're tracking the parcels that are going back and forth, so. One right that might move around a hundred times, if we wanted to, we could trace where it came from at the beginning.
That's basically recorded with a restriction against your deed.
That's right.
And to do that, you'd also have to have permission from your mortgage or.
Some, uh, you mean to, uh, put an additional restriction on it?
No, to give away the rights to that property.
Right, so yeah, if you've got, uh, particular, uh, value assigned to the property, um, based on, uh, its development, it very well may be true. That your value.
Are you wrapping up, Charlie?
I am.
Okay, I have one thing that I'd like to revisit. I've been thinking about our, uh, shared lane. And if you take that two hundred feet, that gives you a sixty-six foot frontage for affordable housing. But if you added one more to that and made it seven, you could get one at the end also, it'd have to be a perfect piece of property, but I think we ought to revisit that and maybe.
Go to seven.
Yeah, just like a cul-de-sac, just like a cul-de-sac for you. Sorry.
That makes, that makes sense, Jen. Well, that would provide the driveway for the fire truck to turn around, too.
But we had.
There you are. Well, they'd be able to do the back and forth, Austin Powers hundred point turn.
I don't think you'd have enough street frontage for that home though, because at that point you end up at.
Well, I had, it'd have to be like a perfect piece of property, but, you know.
No, but even with the perfect piece of property, maybe I'm not thinking this through correctly, but the street would only need to be thirty feet wide. And you'd need to have sixty feet of street frontage to put the home on the end.
He's saying like a cul-de-sac, a lot of cul-de-sacs don't have a.
But they put a bulb out, so you're saying they put a bulb out to get their sixty feet, okay, okay, as long as they put the bulb.
Because your width is gonna be there, I see what you're saying, you're, you're, it's gonna be actually an extremely wide log.
Yeah, and if your property is deeper, you might as well utilize that also.
But they would just have to create the street frontage to make it work, okay, I understand.
Sit back to reach.
I got it.
Change.
Saved.
I have one quick question, if that's okay, I think it's probably for Rick. You mentioned it earlier and Andrew mentioned it last meeting. Where if we could have a statement that we say, you know, when somebody comes through with a proposal, they've done everything right, it's all, there, there's, whether we like it or not. If everything matches the requirements, we have to approve, right? Is there some kind of state, and maybe I'm speaking it. Wrong, but I believe you mentioned that last time, if we had that statement so that the public knows. That, hey, if it meets requirements, whether it's what we prefer or not, we have to allow.
I can include that and sometimes I have when, uh, when you ask the planning director to determine what type of. Item you're reviewing, whether it's administrative or legislative. And, you know, do we take public comment, do we not?
Okay.
We.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And it's, and I don't think it's necessary, I like the way you're doing it, but you know, if we get into, uh, you know, there's a lot of public out, you know, maybe we do that.
Well, I, yeah, I don't know if it's necessary either, and maybe, sorry, Andrew, if I'm throwing you into something that you didn't say. But I feel like sometimes when the public, at least the last few times when they're looking at us, you know, and they're like. They're mad, you know, they're, it's, it's seeming like they're mad at the planning commission when it's like, well. We have to allow this, the property owner has rights as well, right? So, okay.
Right. Come to the meetings with the public, we talk about.
Which has been.
Public comment, comment ordinance.
When we have those, I feel, I know, I know Andrew did it and I tried to do it when I was in here before to, to. Try and stress that point to the people, but a lot of times it, I, I mean, we can, we can preach, we can preach, we can preach and, yeah. I mean, there, there, there's not a good solution for what you're asking, I wish there was, but I, I just. The, the people are gonna be upset no matter what we do or what we say.
Agreed.
And, I mean, you can try and educate and educate, but. Yeah, I.
Well, Rick, Rick and Liam do a good job of explaining what can and can't happen. And, uh, yeah, probably at our last meeting, it would have been a good idea to have thrown that over and had that explanation, maybe some folks walked out of here with a bad taste, but. At the same time. You know, what's, what's the emphasis got to be to people to get them to show up when we need them to show up?
True.
We're doing a general plan, show up, nobody shows up.
True.
We're, we're doing something else that's legislative. So it is what it is, and as far as the pub, that's what I wanted to ask, just one quick other item, we had eliminated and then even put a statement on the agenda. About public comment that we didn't need, that, you know, public comment wasn't necessary on non, uh, public hearing items, I can't remember what the verbiage was. And I didn't look on tonight's agenda to see if that's still on there, we still, we're still running to that, right?
Yeah, on public hearings and that it is definitely required, but on administrative items, it's not.
Right, and that's, yeah, I may have said that wrong, but that's what I, that's what I meant, was on the administrative items that we didn't have to take public comment.
Right.
And, and we weren't, we absolutely said we weren't going to, and I don't think we have since, since we implemented that, but I can't remember if we did or not.
I, I think there's been a few, you guys are a lot better than the Ogden Valley folks, um, they. Almost always take public comment on administrative items and. And up there. Everyone likes, they, their voice is. Very important to them and I understand that, so.
Yeah, but then it comes down to what you mentioned, Casey, and that is it really doesn't mean anything because. If, if it's an administrative item, we don't have to take that, you can get up and complain all you want, but it really does, it's not going to affect the outcome. So it is what it is.
But we don't have a lot of people show up.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's good education for me too, because, because sometimes I. I want, I want to like allow them to say it and then, but knowing that, yeah, there's, that, that would be a good time for that statement to come out and say, well. This is why there is none, I guess, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Hey.
Anything else? Wayne said he's had enough.
Well, we're ten minutes over, so let's go home.
Yeah, well, you said, Wayne. I told my wife I'd be home.